Good morning, this is the public hearing of March 21st, 2017. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chair Schrodolphen?
Here.
Commissioner Bland. Commissioner Chapin. Commissioner Chen. Commissioner Devonshire.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Here.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Voss.
Here.
Morning Commissioners, item number one is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, 36 Skirmerhorn Street, Block 270, Lot 44, LPC 19-9058. A house built in 1852 and altered prior to 1940. Application is to amend a commission approval for constructing a rear yard addition to include altering the front facade. This was approved in part at the public hearing on November 15th, 2016.
Good morning Commissioners, Caroline Pashor Preservation Staff. So this application was first presented at the public hearing on November 15th, 2016. This concluded a proposal to construct the rear addition and alter this front facade. At that time, the Commissioners voted for partial approval, which put the rear addition approved and the alterations at the front facade to be approved if the underlying brick could be salvaged. So as a reminder Commissioners, this house is one in a row of three. So this is number, here's number 38 and here's number, I'm sorry, here's number 36 and here's number 38. Number 36 and the adjacent house of 38 were both altered prior to 1940, where the stoop was removed, a basement entrance created, and facade, as you see here, was resurfaced in stucco. So the applicant had conducted probes, removed some of the brick, and it was found that the brick could not be salvaged. So furthermore, there were comments regarding the design and details of proposed window surrounds and configuration, and so the applicant has revised details to ensure that the window surrounds match the details found at the more intact house here at number 40. So they did a blow up, and whatever they found here at number 40 is what they're going to try to replicate here at number 38. And in terms of window configuration, based on the age and type of the building, was constructed in 1852, they're pretty much going with two over two windows, you know, at the front facade, as you see here, with, I believe this is maybe like a four or, I'm sorry, what is this?
It's supposed to be two, it's supposed to be two over two at all floors.
Okay.
I don't know if that, the bars in the right place at that image, but on the elevation there, it's two over two at all floors.
Okay. And then the ironwork as well, they're going for simpler ironwork, again, what they saw at number 40. So this isn't, they're now proposing.
Caroline, are there any questions? For either for Caroline or for the applicant? So I think the threshold issue was really about whether one could salvage the brick, and I think that's, I think that there was a lot of discussion about whether they should first pursue that avenue and see if they could retain it. But I think, you know, they've looked down the probes and I think working with staff, I think the staff has concluded that the brick can't be salvaged.
Right, so I did do a site visit with the architects and it was really in really deteriorated condition, it was falling apart. So the applicant would like to proceed with re-stuccoing, resurfacing the front facade with, you know, with stucco instead of restoring it to brick.
Yes, Michael.
I was just, I was just looking, there seems to be some difference with the railings, could you just explain what?
That's correct. So because of the property line here, originally they were proposing so that the way would terminate would have a circular newel post, and because they can't do that, they decided to simplify and have a straight run along the stoop and so that it would not be, because it would have been asymmetrical, it would have had this odd, like, this one would have been-
It's like a little knee wall underneath the railing, instead of having the railing go down to the tread?
Oh, here?
Yeah, but there's something different going on.
Yeah, they simplified this part of the stoop. And basically the railings are matching what's at number 40.
And the rustication dropped kind of a little bit?
Here?
Yeah, it's like it starts below the windows instead of at the windows.
Okay, yeah, I think that maybe it's in a drawing thing, but I could definitely work with them to make sure that it matches that number four or whatever's in this photograph. This is typically what we do with applicants when they do restorative work at staff level.
Great.
Okay, great. Are there any questions? Or any comments? Are we fine with this? Okay. Phoenix?
In the matter of docket 19-9058, 36 Skirmerhorn Street, Brooklyn Heights Historic District, the application is to amend a commission approval for constructing a rear yard addition to include altering the front facade. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I also note that the stoop was removed, a basement entrance created, and the facade resurfaced in stucco prior to 1940. I recommend approval finding that the original brick facade has been highly altered with the removal of its stoop and cornice, resurfacing with brownstone-colored stucco, and replacement of windows prior to 1940, and that these early 20th century alterations were further compromised since designation, therefore the work will not eliminate any significant architectural features. The probes have determined that the historic brick beneath the stucco is deteriorated beyond reasonable repairs and therefore cannot be salvaged, that the removal of the raised parapet wall and installation of a painted wood cornice will restore the building's original height, allowing the building to better relate to the other row houses in the streetscape, that the proposed window and door surrounds pediment and rusticated base will match the profile and details found in a historic tax photo of a house within the row and therefore will help bring this row house closer to its historic appearance, that the two new over two, two over two wood double-hung windows will match the historic windows in terms of configuration, operation, material, and finish on buildings of this age, type, and style, that the proposed wood and glass double-leaf doors at the parlor floor will be in keeping with the types of doors historically found on buildings of this age and style, and that the proposed black painted ironwork at the basement windows, stoop, and areaway will recall features typically found on buildings of this type and period within the historic district.
All in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Okay Commissioners, I'm going to read the next two items in together, items two and three. First is LPC 19-5636, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Queens, Block 1461, Lot 56, 35-5587th Street in the Jackson Heights Historic District, Anglo-American Garden Home Style House, built in 1925. Application is to legalize the installation of windows, retaining wall, door, and security gates without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. Second item is LPC 19-5637, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Queens, Block 1461, Lot 57, 35-5787th Street in the Jackson Heights Historic District, Anglo-American Garden Home Style House, built in 1925. Application is to legalize the installation of windows and a retaining wall without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits.
All right. Before we start, I just want to reopen the hearing for the next 16 items. As you know, they were scheduled for March 14th, and because of the weather, we rescheduled them for today, and so they're all public meeting items, but we will be taking testimony on all of them. It'll basically be conducted as a public hearing. Okay, so I'm going to reopen the hearing for the next 16 items.
Good morning Commissioners, Kate Forrest Preservation Staff. The application is for 3555 and 3557 87th Street. They're two adjoining Anglo-American garden-style homes on the east side of the street between 37th and 35th avenues in the Jackson Heights Historic District. The proposal is to legalize alterations done without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits, including at both properties, replacement of all windows, and construction of retaining walls, and at only 3555, which will be the first presentation. We're also seeing the replacement of the front areaway, the front entryway door, the installation of a security gate, and they also, we're seeing a security camera and conduit. The applicant is here to discuss the proposals.
My name is Talisha Seanville, and I'm here on behalf of the owners at 3555 and 3557 87th Street. These are adjacent properties, and I, both applications are submitted to legalize elements at the facade, as I'm about to tell you. The first is 3555 87th Street. The owner would like to obtain a permit to replace the gutters, leaders, and downspouts at the front facade. Okay. Okay, never mind. Moving right along, we would like to also legalize the security gate and the front door. The security gate, we're proposing to paint white, as shown on the middle right-hand side, so that, we're proposing to paint it white so that it blends in more with the rest of the trim on the facade. We're also proposing to keep the front entry door, which is shown on the top right-hand side, as is, and to change the light fixture to the proposed light fixture on the bottom right-hand side. And on, in the middle, at the top and the bottom, I mean, at the bottom, you can see a rendering of the light fixture, the painted security gate, and the gutters, but you don't have to worry about that. We're also proposing to legalize the windows at the facade, which currently do not have exterior mutton bars. These add-on mutton bars were approved for another project down the block, 3516 87th Street, so we're proposing the same thing, to add on the exterior mutton bars. And we are also looking to legalize the front areaway retaining wall. This is shown on LPC 04. This current retaining wall is 15 inches high, and I did survey the rest of the block, which you can see on LPC 05, to show the other retaining walls that are on the block, and there's an average retaining height wall of about 15 inches. So we're proposing to keep the 15 inches, but the owner is prepared to infill the missing brick on the top course or change it if need be.
Okay, so that's the first house, and we're going to do the second house.
So at 3557, it is based, almost the same items. We're proposing to legalize the windows at the front facade with the same add-on exterior grill. We're proposing to change, replace the light fixture. The existing light fixture is up at the top, and the bottom shows a rendering of the proposed light fixture to replace it. And on LPC 04, you can see the existing retaining wall. This retaining wall is about 11 and 1/2 inches high, and you'll see on LPC 05 pictures, again, of the other retaining walls that are contained on the, on the east side of the block. The owner of this property is prepared to add another course on top of this to bring it up to 15 inches if need be.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes. Sorry, Kate Forrest, I, as Commissioner's Staff, I was just going to add, the gutters and the light fixtures are being handled at staff level, so those are not something that needs to be addressed with the commission.
Are there any questions? Okay, we can take testimony. Barbara Zay. The train was so slow today. Barbara, you're going to comment on both items, right? Okay, you can do them separately if you want to.
That's fine, it's a very short statement for the second one.
Okay.
Barbara Zay of the Historic District Council. These relatively simple houses lend charm and a human scale to the Jackson Heights Historic District. This contribution is largely derived from subtle but important details: windows, doors, gutters, slate tiles, front yards, et cetera. As such, HDC urges the commission to require the installation of wood windows with proper brick molds, as the replacement windows frames appear very thick. We would also like to make a plea for a front door based on the design of the one found here originally. Another detail in the facade, though not listed as part of this application, are the gutters, which have quite unfortunately been changed to white painted aluminum. Restoring the half-round copper gutters would go a long way toward honoring this house's historic appearance and contribution to the district. Finally, we also note that while there have been many retaining walls installed at front yards in this district, we question the approval of illegal walls like this one. At the very least, the wall should be redesigned to be more in keeping with others found in the district. The top layer of brick is not well-integrated into the rest of the wall, making the entire thing look kind of clunky. A more thoughtful attempt might be, make the wall more acceptable. On 3557, we just would ask for installation of wood windows and half-round copper gutters. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? All right, let's see. Community Board, Community Board Three recommends for, for the first building, they recommend approval with the suggestion that the owner consider installing copper gutters and leaders, retaining the original copper supports, as the natural aging green color would be closer to the landmark designation. It also suggested that the white security cameras be painted or replaced with a camera closer in brick, closer in color to the bricks. And their comments for second building is that they recommend approval with the suggestion that the owner consider installing copper gutters and leaders, retaining the original copper supports, natural aging, that would close the landmark designation. All right, do we have any other questions for the applicant? Do you want to respond? Yes.
Hi, I just wanted to mention in terms of the gutters and the leaders, that the reason why the owners are proposing to do a galvanized steel painted white is because the copper gutters that were there were stolen off of the facade, and you can see in the top picture on LPC 02 for both properties, that there's a little bit of a remaining copper, you know, piece of the gutter up there, but that's the reason why that they're proposing galvanized steel as opposed to the copper, replacing it with copper, because they don't want it to be stolen.
Any other questions? Right, would that be concludes the hearing? Right, comments? Diane, go ahead.
Well, yeah, retaining walls are pretty typical of this district and even this area. And it is fairly necessary with regard to, you know, just retaining the front wall in there, but in some cases, people in other places have installed huge fences and large. I think that this very low retaining wall is not disruptive. It might be a good model for other locations, you know, instead of something more, that would more impede the, your view of the facade. The doors, most of the doors are really historic on the block, I think, and so I think that we should have something that's, we should have something, you know, that's a little more, closer to what the historic door would be. And the brick molds, we should replace the brick molds on the, on the windows. I think it's just the brick molds on the second one, if I remember correctly, that were, there was not, yeah. And, well, the security features are, you know, really are, I think, rather intrusive and need to figure out a way to relocate, if it's a camera necessary, so that it doesn't have such an intrusive look. That's a general.
Right, I think for the security features, the conduits and the camera, our staff has often worked with applicants to try and find a place where it's least intrusive and choose colors that allow it to blend with the facade. Yes, Michael.
I think I agree with Diane. I think the brick mold needs to match the original. I agree about the door. But the issue I have with the retaining wall is the addition to the crenellation on top, which makes it anomalous to the rest of the retaining walls and is above the grade of the soil there, and they don't match the other bricks on the retaining wall, so I would, I would say off those.
Right, what they said was, this is for the first building, which is that it's, I can't remember what, how many inches it was, but they said that infill those bricks, but I think the recommendations in fact just take out that layer of brick?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so then it's-
They're added after the fact anyway, you can see, they're different bricks.
Okay, it does look kind of like it's just added on.
I was really, yes, I agree with Michael, I was commenting on the height, that I didn't think it was, in general, that it was necessary for the, there should be a retaining wall, but I agree with Michael's comments.
There's a row of row hops under that that are actually decorated.
Yeah, that would be, that would be better, I agree.
Yes, Michael.
I agree with everything that's been said, I just wanted to throw in there incredulity at our approving at a staff level the replacement of copper with galvanized metal. I guess it's kind of sad if, you know, if the neighborhood is so dangerous that you can't affix gutters to your wall without worrying about them being stolen. And I wouldn't not vote for it for that reason, but I think this project is suffering from the kind of misplaced mercy in a way. I mean, we're approving plastic grills on windows and metal instead of copper. I'll go along with it, but it's like, it's unfortunate.
Yeah, we haven't had that much.
Other comments?
What about the security gate? Are we, was that, that's going?
Here it goes.
Yeah. Well, I think maybe, Kate, are there other security gates in, in the neighborhood?
There are other security gates, however, they are illegal and the ones that have come forward to the commission have been denied.
Okay. I'm, you know, I just have some, I can understand that the Commissioners want to remove it, but I, I think that security, people need to feel safe in their homes, and I think different people have, I think, a different level of how safe they feel. So, you know, in some ways, security gates are like, I don't know, storm gates or something, they're things that can be removed, they're replaceable, reversible, it's painted white, maybe that's okay, but, you know, it's just my own concern about denying somebody the ability to feel safe. But if the Commissioners feel we should remove it, then we can ask them to remove it.
No, I agree with you, Kate, you can keep the security gate, but I also think, back to the copper. I mean, if there's all the security equipment and, and an ability to see what's taken and removed, I think we should, they should take a chance and put back copper.
The copper is, is before us or, no, it isn't, so.
Oh.
There's certain aspects of the project that can be legalized at staff level based on our rules, and that replacement is allowed under certain conditions, and so staff has approved that.
What are those conditions?
Can you speak to that, Caroline, or, of course? Generally about, oh, sorry, Bernadette.
This was reviewed by the staff, and it was found that there are a number of buildings in the district that have the white aluminum and that's consistent with the architecture, so that was the basis that that decision was made.
Got that?
They're not legal. You're right.
Are we talking about the other ones in the district? There would be a number that would be grandfathered, I don't, we didn't do a complete inventory of the district.
Okay, so, all right, so let's just go through these points. The retaining walls, for one, the second home it's fine, the first is that they're going to remove one layer of brick and it'll bring it back to its height, it won't have the crenellation. We'll ask them to work with staff to replace the door to be more recalling of the historic door. Ask them to work with staff and improve the brick mold and remove the, I guess, the panning should be removed and replace with brick molds. They can work with staff on security features, including the location and color of security cameras and conduits, and I think that's it. Is there one more? Yeah, yes.
The, in addition to the brick, what they're going to do is they're going to tap it with a mallet, and the brick's going to come off, and the mortar is going to remain there. They need to take the mortar off.
Okay, right, so obviously they should finish it off in terms of the, yeah, have-
Result.
Yes. Okay. John?
In the matter of-
John, you may want to just note also, if it's not there, that, that the security gate is reversible and will be painted white in the main body of-
In the matter of docket number 19-5636, 3555 87th Street in the Jackson Heights Historic District, the application is to legalize the installation of windows, a retaining wall, door, and security gate without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the architectural and historic character of the Jackson Heights Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, noting that the existing windows match the historic windows in terms of configuration and finish, that the proposed applied muntens will closely replicate the historic muntens in terms of placement with depth and profile, that the presence of the low retaining walls helps address erosion at the sloping front yard, that the low height and simple design of the retaining walls help them to retain, remain a discreet secondary presence at the site and within streetscape views, and then the materials, finishes, and details of the walls are compatible with the design of the house, and in keeping with such aspects of the walls of this type throughout the streetscape and historic district, supporting a unified streetscape. And I note that while the security gates may not be typical of the neighborhood, it is a reversible addition to the home. However, I note that the windows lack profile brick molds, a significant characteristic of the historic windows, that this existing modern door is not consistent with the age and style of the building, that the exterior, that the security camera, junction box, and conduit are prominent in placement and finished in colors which call attention to the installation. Therefore, I recommend that the panning, that the applicant work with staff to ascertain that the panning at the window frames is removed and the historic wood brick mold restored, that the modern door be replaced with a door that replicates the historic door in terms of materials, design, details, and finish, that the exterior security gate be painted white, and that the junction box and conduit be removed, and that the applicant work with staff to relocate the camera to a less obtrusive location and finish it to blend with its surroundings, and that the applicant work with staff to ascertain that the retaining wall would be modified to conform with other retaining walls in the area by removing the top layer of crenellated bricks and ascertaining that the finish, the top layer is finished appropriately.
Just as a clarification, I understand about the street, but the indoor, the indoor to be replaced?
Yeah, yes. Okay. Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
In the matter of docket number 19-5637, 3557 87th Street in the Jackson Heights Historic District, the application is to legalize the installation of windows and a retaining wall without Landmarks Preservation- wall without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. I note that the building style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Jackson Heights Historic District. I recommend approval with a modification, finding that the existing windows match the historic windows in terms of configuration and finish, that the proposed applied muntens will closely replicate the historic muntens in terms of placement with depth and profile, that the presence of the low retaining walls helps address erosion at the sloping front yard, that the low height and simple design of the retaining walls help them to remain a discreet secondary presence at the site and within streetscape views, and that the materials, finishes, and details of the walls are compatible with the design of the house and in keeping with such aspects of walls of this type throughout the streetscape and historic district, supporting a unified streetscape. However, I find that the windows lack profile brick molds, a significant characteristic of the historic windows, and therefore recommend that the panning at the window frames be removed and the historic wood brick mold be restored.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
The following, the following item is item number four, it's an application for a certificate of appropriateness, the Borough of Brooklyn, docket number 195555, this is 162 Montague Street, located within the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. It's a rowhouse modified in 1933. The application is to modify the areaway and alter the front and rear facades, replace windows, install signage, and construct rooftop additions. This was read into the record on March 14th and is being presented today for the first time.
Morning Commissioners, Timothy Shaw, Preservation Staff. 162 Montague Street is located on the south side of Montague Street, between Clinton and Henry Streets, within the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is the building here. The application is for alterations at the front facade, including the installation of a new stoop and a new cornice, the restoration of the brownstone facade at the upper floors, and to legalize a below-grade storefront at the projecting bay down here, for the installation of new areaway ironwork and stairs leading to the two storefronts, the installation of signage at the upper storefront and at the railing, and for the construction of new dormers, a new mantard roof, a new bulkhead and chowls, and for alterations at the rear facade. Ben Ellis, the architect, will present the proposal in detail.
Good morning Commissioners, Ben Ellis, project. Thank you, Tim. Sorry?
Yes, please go ahead.
Ah, so, yes, this is the rendered elevation, the existing and proposed. Moving right along, we have the tax block photo, 1940s. The building was modernized in the 30s, we'll get to that slide in a second. LVC designation photos, the two on the right, two different views. This is the 162 and 162 here, a close-up view. We've managed to find some historic photos, drawings and such. Wonderful internet. These are all presented to the building to our left, the Franklin Trust Building, but we can catch little views of our building to the right, here, to the right. Here's a blow-up of this photo and above it, and another view here, street view, and a blow-up of that. We can see through the trees. The building was originally a single-family home. We had a little stoop, which we can see here, which I'm not sure this is rendered entirely correctly, we can get to that in a second. We had a projecting center bay at the second floor, we had three arched openings, we're pretty sure of that, we can see that in this photo here, drawing, I'm not sure what that is. So that's history. So this is our most interesting photo that we found. This is the side view of our building, we can see the stoop original, the arched opening, you can around the second floor window, third floor window, cornice, and a peak of two arched dormers at the top floor. This is a drawing, they found at the building department, indicating the modernization. These are the approved view, the drawings, the elevation, and two plans. We can see the removal of the stoop, you know, everything in 1933. So here we have the three views, the architectural rendering, the current drawing, existing conditions, and our proposed, all three lined up. We can get to, we can discuss briefly the viewability of our dormers here, we can begin to see it here. Well, first, what we're proposing is, of course, the cornice. What we believe is, from various photographs, existing conditions such that the original cornice height was down about two feet from where it is now, so we're proposing to bring that back. We are proposing to bring up the sill height of the second floor by about seven inches, and that is actually due to the maximum height that Marvin Windows will give us on the window heights, for the size of a window, it's fairly large. See the entry, the railing around, we'll see that better views in a second. This is the existing in context. We have the proposed in context. Here we can begin to see what we can see from the street in front on Montague. Here, this diagram, we can see that we get a peek of the dormers and how we're going to lower the existing top of the wall. So here's the proposed, what we believe is we are seeing about the same amount of those dormers. We're also going to add a third dormer. This is a diagram that graphically tries to represent what is viewable from across the street, up and down Montague, which we can see better, we did a mock-up. These are various photos we took from the neighborhood of what we can see of the mock-up. We have views from the front, across Montague, we have views up Clinton, which is up here, boom, right there, that's the maximum viewability, it's through a fairly narrow corridor. We have some views from the rear, down Clinton, the back of the, back of the building, which will become partially or mostly obscured by the addition, the one-story addition that's being currently proposed on this building at the corner here of Clinton, ransom. This is, these are photos now of the mock-up, so we can see up and down Montague, what can be seen of the dormers, this is the dormer we proposed to add. These are views from up Clinton, the maximum viewability. Just to clarify, we can see some of what we're proposing as a trellis, the dormer, I mean, excuse me, the bulkhead, air bulkhead, and the top of the mantard roof line, as well as that little orange segment is the new dormer. Various details of the windows, brownstone recreation, to a certain extent, close, very close, as close as we think we could get to the original, some difference. Here's the raising of the second floor window, here in this view. This is all brownstone stucco detailing, facade. More views, indoor details. Dormer details. This is the top of our new cornice.
What's the cornice made of?
The cornice, we are proposing fiberglass, e-don. We have a price for a tin cornice. It's about twice as expensive. Views of the store, of the restaurants and the current conditions, existing entrance to the building. Plan view of what we propose to do with the entrances to the restaurants, we have mandatory restaurant, will be accessed through an altered iron seal porch, and the leaching Chinese restaurant, now accessed by a safer stair, now approached from the left-hand side. The existing here, down to the Chinese restaurant, is very unsafe. This is a section cut through the areaway, showing the storefront below the Chinese restaurant, existing, and the Japanese restaurant and a tour above, various signage. Talk a bit about signage?
Ooh, that's a tough subject.
Ooh, sorry.
Well...
Go for it. Perhaps Tim can help me with this, but what we're showing here is pretty much all the existing signage. This is not currently what we have.
Well, are you proposing to, proposing to clean it up and, because it's quite a hodgepodge?
Reps, Tim's been a lot more along the ground with this one.
Right now, there are, there's signage here...
There are two establishments, right?
Two establishments, there's a Chinese restaurant at the below-grade storefront, a Japanese restaurant at the first-floor storefront. Currently, there is a violation from 1989 for the storefront at the, at the below-grade store, for the change of the infill, which is now currently just sort of a black aluminum. It's actually not clear what the material was previously at the time of designation, it probably had changed at some point, but it's the same configuration as it is now, and the installation of this signage here, which previously had been on a panel, they removed that panel, exposed this copper, and then installed lettering on that, on that storefront. At the upper floor, there's various neon and some other signage in the window. There are, a lot of the signage is not specifically cited as being in violation, but it's not clear when things were installed. There's a slight difference, as Ben was noting, there's a slight difference in what's currently here at this store, but it is the same condition, just kind of they changed this, this kind of vinyl signage that's backlit, they changed that out periodically. What is proposed as a new signage is a new sign here above the storefront, the second floor, at this location, and for the installation of a new, a new menu board for the below-grade storefront, which will be attached to the back of the areaway fence, so you would go in onto the landing, and the new menu board would be right there, and that would be illuminated internally, and the rest of the, the rest of the signage currently is to remain. Again, there's some neon signage at the below-grade storefront, a, some kind of strip lighting around the windows, and there's some neon and vinyl lettering at the upper storefront.
So none of this signage was approved?
I don't believe that the existing, any of the existing signage was approved, no. But it's, it's sort of in, signage that was cited for violation was removed, but they didn't point out every single element, and it's sort of, they've changed it over the years, like they add something, they take it away, and we're not out there every day on them, so.
Yeah, now, what I was trying to get at was, is all of the signage before us right now?
Is any of the signage...
I think we, I think there's a few things we could legalize, some of the neon we could legalize, and, but it's, we are looking at all of that signage because they're adding more signage here at this location and the menu board.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't, so that, that banner is leaving?
That banner is not, it is not part of the proposal to leave. You could require that they remove it, but it's not part of the current proposal. The current proposal is not to remove any of the existing signage, but to add new signage here and a new menu box at this location.
And what is the signage that you can legalize, meaning staff?
I believe we could, we may be able to legalize some of the neon, they may just have to set it back slightly, but, you know, it's all, all before you now for review.
Okay. I think the commissioners can review the cumulative amount of signage because they are proposing new signage and recommend that they remove existing signage that has changed from what was approved under permits, so I think it's all up for grabs. Okay?
This is a view of the streetfront section through the sidewalk, showing the rail, our stoop, with its rails, there's the menu board in the back of that landing.
Can I ask a question about the lunette over the two doors? It looks like the old lunette is still there and you're replacing it with a new one, is that old lunette historic and you salvage it?
That's a good question. It wouldn't fit with the wider door opening.
The whole thing's getting wider.
Yeah, yeah, it's in sort of compromised condition, the lead is missing between some of the panes, and just wouldn't fit with the restored, with, we did probes from the interior and determined that what we're proposing is pretty much dead on the previous width of the original door, or doors. Various views of the lobby into the upstairs, section through the proposed stoop with its heavier iron railing here on each side, the entrance to the Japanese restaurant here, see it in plan view, straight run, slight curve to meet the bay, storefront bay. And now we have just plans throughout the building, existing, both side by side, second floor, third floor. Second floor is commercial, the two upper floors, the third and the fourth, are both floors through apartments, rental apartments. Existing stair to the fourth floors is very difficult stair, which we are proposing to remove, and to abide with code, continue the public stair up to the roof to a bulkhead, which would be required under building code, access to the roof. The next part of our proposal has to do with the restaurant exhaust ventilation. The next part of our proposal has to do with the restaurant exhaust ventilation. We're proposing to replace the three major ducts and fans. We can see them here. These are up blast restaurant fans. And along the back, new ductwork down to the restaurants, back of the building. It's our dormer. We're proposing a small deck area here. Additional fans here for bathrooms and kitchens. At the rear, now, we have partial plans of the rear yard. It's, we have a walk-in box for the Japanese restaurant at the existing roof of the first floor. We are proposing to alter the fire escape by adding, we are adding a roof to cover the existing roof. This is somewhat of a shield. So that, well, it cleans up the egress is one reason we're doing this, so that we propose a drop ladder down to this new non-combustible roof, covering what is quite a mess, to be honest with you. So this is the alteration of the access to the rear yard, two new fire escape ladders, essentially fire escape ladders. These are views of the backyard, existing exhaust ducts. And photo on the right is the view from down Clinton Street where we can see the one duct rising up through the trees, that is this duct, which is for the Japanese restaurant. Elevations of the rear yard, the rear facade, existing and proposed. Here we can see the drop ladder proposed down to the new non-combustible roof, covering the existing first-floor roof. The addition of the two fire escape ladders, access to the rear yard, required by code. We're proposing to remove the gooseneck ladder, access to the roof with another fire escape ladder to the roof. Removing the ductwork over to the side. Section drawing, existing and proposed. Roof, ladders, exhaust ducts to the roof, excuse me, with the up blast fans. Photos of the roof, existing conditions. Here are the two dormers, you can see, existing dormers.
Can you go to the views, please? Are they, is the change in ductwork, is that visible?
Well, let's see, okay.
Well, is that, is that the only view? Yes, Tim?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is the only view over the rear.
Where you see it?
And the buildings here, the ductwork is going to be moved to the right side of the, the east side of the roof. And this is, this is a building that's being modified for Packer Institute.
Yes, I know, we saw it.
They got approval for a one-story addition that will be about to this height. And so that whatever you see here will most likely not be visible anymore, as that was part of their visibility study in their presentation. And so the ductwork is actually shifting over.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, are there questions? Any questions? I just want to go back to the signage, because, you know, we asked about signage, you said, oh, that's very complicated. Can you just at least explain to us, since all of it is illegal and kind of random, can you just talk about the appropriateness? How does this fit in with signage along Montague Street? And why do you think it should be approved?
Well, Montague Street is a very busy, commercial street, always the restaurants at store level, at street level. In my, in my view, in the general scheme of Montague Street, this, these two stores do not stand out remarkably, I feel. They seem to fit in. There's a lot of signage, there's a lot of menu boards out onto the sidewalk that are removed in the evening.
And can you just also explain to the, just how, the added signage that you're planning to do and why?
Well, we'd like to add this because it's, it's essentially at the level at which one finds signs at a storefront, up at this band. I mean, we, it's not your typical storefront band, it's a bay. So we're adding this little one here, the menu board, set back from the sidewalk, internally lift.
That's mounted on the wall, is that right?
It's mounted on the railings.
Mounted on the railing?
Yeah, at the back of the landing, here. So it's not kind of at the level of the front. We are proposing, in addition, oh, sorry. There's an existing bracket, sign bracket, that goes way back, was at designation. Let's see, it should show in one of the photos. Here we go. And Pier sixteen is occupying the first floor. It's an existing bracket that we're proposing to retain.
Sorry.
Does it exist right now?
Just to clarify, the bracket is there currently, there's no sign on the bracket.
It's just a frame, it's just the middle?
Right, we don't have a, it is, it does appear to be the same bracket that was there, the same armature, excuse me, that was there at the time of designation. We do not currently have a proposal for the signage for that, that in theory could be approved at staff level in looking at the context of all the other signage. But that currently is not in the proposal.
Tim, can I just ask one question? We're talking about adding signage here, we're not talking about removing any signage.
The proposal is to add signage, yes.
There are eleven signs on this front right now.
Right.
And we're talking about adding another one?
They are talking about adding one menu board sign and one sign above the store, yes.
But...
Right.
Okay.
If you have a boost of the signage that Tim too...
The signage that's shown in this, right, that's, they're referring to, there were, there was some signage on the facade previously here. You'll see the ghosts of where those were installed, that was removed, but they haven't addressed the facade condition. But all of the rest of the signage that is shown on this, on this elevation detail, I think there even may be another neon sign here. That is all still there. Confirmed.
Okay. Any other questions? Are, are there any speakers on site, Tim? Any speakers? No speakers? Right, community board too recommends approval on the condition that the new cornice be constructed in tin or wood, not tin. And the Brooklyn Heights Association, let's see, recommends approval, but their concerns are the treatment of the first and second floors, while historically its fire do not actually reflect historical conditions, the first and second floor. Okay. All right, do we have any other questions for the applicant? All right, we can close the hearing.
Someone.
Okay, so I think if we can, for organization standpoint, what do we talk about the things outside of the signage, and then we can deal with the signage of the two storefronts? Because that's, I think we'll have maybe a lot of discussion. All right, so just on the other work that they're doing, which is the facade, the, the raising of the roof, the restoration, or bringing back the cornice, and the, is the dormer windows, comments, concerns? Yes?
One general comment, if I might, there was a statement made that the reason we're changing the sill level on the facade is because Marvin will only make a certain size window. And I think it's a, it's a very sad slope that we walk down. If window manufacturers like Marvin begin to dictate what the facades of our buildings look like, if this was an individual landmark, I would be vehemently against it. I don't have so much of a problem with it. I do feel that there is absolutely no place for fiberglass cornice in this district, and so I'm vehemently against that. If the applicant needs to, there are many companies that actually make, like WF Norman, they make sheet metal cornice material that, that you can get stock this period, so it's not an extravagance to, to make a sheet metal cornice on a building like this.
Other comments? Yes, Kim?
I, I like the cornice. I think the cornice is appropriate. They move it, not that the materials, just the way the cornice is there in the dormer, the modifications to the dormer, the front door to the main building, though I'm not that sold on the one in the bay with the stoop, they've modified that turning one with the stoop, but I can, it's not the greatest, but I can live with it. But the front door is okay, though I'm not sure the fan window above it is historic enough. Then they can work with staff on that. Otherwise, the signage seems excessive. There seems to be a lot of signage on that building.
All right, other comments? Yeah?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little troubled by the, I agree with, with what everyone was saying about Michael and Kim about various factors. I don't have a problem with the roof or the, or...
About the, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Once the metal gets to be sheet metal, once the cornice gets to be sheet metal, I think it's fine. I'm a little concerned about the, the stucco work on, on the two floors that are being semi-restored. We have here is a, a Victorian townhouse that was modified in the forties in a kind of neo-federal way. That's a very typical way of, of brownstones having been modified that we generally protect. And in this scheme, the proposal is basically to kind of wind back in a way, the upper, the second and third floor, to something more closely resembling the original, while leaving the flavor of the neo-Georgian work on the, on the first floor alone. And I think if that's being done, and if there is historic documentation for it, the work that's done on the second and third floor should resemble the existing to the greatest degree possible. I don't, I think that the, the photographic evidence is pretty good, that shows a segmental header over the, over the second-floor window, and over the center third-floor window. I think that they should just work with staff to make, you know, I think that a kind of haphazard reinterpretation has no basis. It's, it becomes decorative and scenographic as opposed to historic. And if we have historic evidence, and if they're going to the trouble, I'd say just, you know, wrap it up, do it right. And I also think that, that where we do have historic material, in the bay window on the first and basement floors, that the copper should be stripped and exposed and repaired as part of the work. I mean, right now, it's painted black, and I think that it, it's probably, you know, it probably is not, it probably, unless evidence can be found to support that that was the original intent, I would say they should roll that back.
All right, other comments?
I agree with that.
All this stucco, sheet metal.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, well, I, you know, just on the facade work, I think that, you know, there's an opportunity here. I think it's good that they're bringing it back. So overall, that, leaving aside the signage, which is illegal and that have to come to us, the rest of the stuff they're proposing, and I think that's positive. And I would agree that they should continue to work with staff on trying to get the, the details, the material, to really reflect what it was historically to the best extent possible. So, and, you know, raising the roof and the visibility with that, I think is very minimal. And, and I think the introduction of the dormer window also is, I think, works within the facade and seems consistent. So I think those changes, just in terms of the cornice, I think we've allowed for, like now, stuff, we've allowed for cornices to be in other material, is that correct?
That is correct.
Similar to this. And I think that...
Usually when it's higher up, though.
Yeah. Well, it's usually above the second floor, I don't know.
Usually, and it, it's certainly an issue for some commissioners that has been raised consistently. And I think that, my recollection is that usually we, when approved, it's done at where it's kind of far beyond sight, you know, above like a fifth, sixth, seventh floor, top tenement, top of apartment building kind of thing.
Part of the problem with fiberglass, with fiberglass cornices, and, and I would say if, if the applicant followed Michael's idea about the decoration, the cornice would actually be brackets and very small dentals, rather than the decorative medallion. So it would actually be less expensive to replicate. But one of the problems with fiberglass is that the sections have to be, they can only be a certain length. And so instead of getting this, this really nice sheet look to the cornice that, that would have been done, if it had been done in wood or sheet metal, what you have to have are expansion joints that are filled with sealant every foot and a half on these things. And it absolutely comes nowhere near to replicating what the thing would have looked like originally.
And you can see it from the street.
I don't know, you can start very...
You'd have to...
Okay. All right.
It's visible.
Well, I think that, you know, I think if you walk on Montague Street, you see a lot of signage, and you see it at both levels, and you see some neon signs as well. And I don't know how much of that is legal or grandfathered, but I know for the, you know, past 25 years, it's had a mix of signage. So I think what's troubling about this is, again, it's, you know, it was an opportunity to maybe reconcile it and make it better. There's some signs that look pretty crappy. There's that one sign that they have, yeah, can we just go back to it?
Back, yeah, there you go.
So leaving all the clutter, which is, the stuff says open and all that stuff on the windows, which I don't know if that really falls within signage, but the, the main sign just, so you have two signs, one is at the lower level, and then you have non-natory above, and it just, maybe it's old or something, but it looks just like, not particularly well thought, and it's crappy. So, and then you have the neon sign above that, which essentially is kind of replicates what is said at the lower level, so it seems, not replicate, but duplicates it, so I don't know if you need that much signage now.
Oh, I'm not sure that the, I understand the context of Montague Street, but we've got three signage violations, one from 1989, one from 2007, and one from 2011. The only option I can see here is, is having them work with staff to start from scratch, come up with a proposal that is acceptable to the staff. I don't have to oversee that, but I think we, this, here, we have to undo a bunch of stuff. And I think we have standing to do that, because it's, I don't know which of these pieces violated, which of these, at what time, but they're, but several of them are in violation, so I think it's just got to be rationalized. And we're not going to be able to do that sitting here.
All right, I think that seems fine. Okay.
I just want to say one thing about the...
I just want to say one thing about the hodgepodge. It's been actually, you know, Montague Street has been very slow to evolve in terms of its, you know, taking care of its buildings and upgrading itself in a positive way, not only in terms of the buildings itself, but the general look and feel. I'm very glad that the commission has played an active role in landmarking buildings and it would, you know, we're going to do something. It would have been a shame for us to do nothing when the rest of this building is being upgraded. And I think it behooves us to also continue to lead the way in terms of what we would like, you know, what would, what we feel should be appropriate for a retail presence on this very important street in the heart of a very, you know, important historic district in Brooklyn. So, that's it. I'm glad we're doing something.
I just want to say that I agree that it's absolutely true that Montague has a ton of signage, but if we could have, this is very, you know, just all over the place. And it would be great if we, you know, could get a better kind of, you know, approach to signage on the storefronts along there. And I realize it is difficult, as staff pointed out, you know, creeping signage is an ongoing issue, you know, because people just put up something without really consulting. So, anyway, just agree with the comment. Thank you.
Okay. We know what we want to say? Okay. But I think, you know, just so that, and I completely agree with Eugenia, they're here, they're upgrading their building, they're going to need some signage. I think the staff has the ability to ensure that you have placement on the signage for both, both storefronts, right? So there's one at the lower level and there's one above. And that fall within at least the spirit of how we've allowed signs in storefronts. And I think, you know, I think that, I would imagine as they move forward, they will be able to reconcile their signage with staff so that that doesn't set them back. And they can continue to add to Montague Street success. By the way, all this part is very successful, even 25 years ago. But this is always an opportunity to get some of these buildings back. Okay.
And did we resolve on the aluminum brick molds? Do we have?
On the corners?
Well, not on the corners, on the windows.
I think that, you know, on issues of windows, I think that, you know, I would continue to recommend, as we have in other cases, to work with staff on the details of that.
Right.
Is it in specific?
Do we want for them to be aluminum in this case?
Just to be clear, the proposed windows at the upper floors are aluminum clad and with aluminum clad brick molds. That's what's proposed for now.
Is it a pan brick mold or is it a bead and quirk?
It's a bead.
Or a field?
Bead and quirk. It's another pan.
Okay.
Okay.
In the matter of LPC 195555, 162 Montague Street in Brooklyn Heights Historic District. It's a row house modified in 1933 in the applications to modify the areaway and alter the front and rear facades, replace windows, install signage, and construct rooftop additions. I note the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. And I recommend approval with some modifications finding that the existing ground floor arched entrance, while a part of the 19, circa 1933 alteration to the building and with an historic decorative fan-like transom, is not well scaled to the tall base of the building, and therefore its replacement will not result in the loss of a significant feature of the building's historic alteration. That the new building entrance with a new brownstone stucco stoop and stepped-back cheek walls with a railing above and an arched opening with a pair of wooden glass doors with a transom above will closely match the design of the historic building entrance, thereby restoring the significant architectural feature of the building. That the new brownstone stucco surrounds lintels and sills at the second and third floor windows and the new, and the new cornice will recall the historic details as seen in historic photographs and will help restore the building closer to its historic appearance. That the new tripartite windows at the wide second floor window opening will result in a more consistent fenestration pattern, and that this configuration will be more in keeping with the historic character of the building. That the design of the visible dormers with a new mansard roof behind will be in keeping with visible attic additions at buildings of a similar age and style found elsewhere within the historic district. And the use of aluminum clad windows, wood segmental arched windows at the dormers instead of wood will not be discernible from the street. That the visibility of the new trellis and bulkhead of the roof over the front facade and the potential visibility of flues and acoustical panels at the roof over the rear facade will not overwhelm or detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the streetscape. That the majority of work will not eliminate any significant architectural features of the building or site. That the new metal stairs at the areaway and leading to the bay window storefront entrance will be simply designed and located within the existing areaway and therefore will not detract from the special architectural character of the building or the streetscape. That the proposed signage is one which we'll discuss in a moment. That the storefront is mostly below grade and within the deep areaway, therefore the variation in detail from historic infill do not detract from the architectural character of the building or the streetscape. However, we find that the backlit signage at the bay window storefront and the LED strips outlining the window at the basement level and the combination with other existing and proposed signage detracts from the character of the building. And that the aluminum, yeah, therefore, we would recommend that the applicant work with staff to begin, work on signage sort of anew. And that the work be to rationalize new signage, remove violations on old signage together with staff. And that the applicant also work with staff on the details of the brick molds, the mullions, and the window surrounds in order to bring, to render the details as close to historic profiles as can be done. Anything more? Oh, okay. And we go back to the cornice for a moment, and that the cornice will be constructed in sheet metal or tin.
Okay, second, all in favor? Any opposed? Applications booked.
Okay, Mr. Schottus, the next item is item number five. It's an application for certificate of appropriateness, the borough of Brooklyn, docket number, docket number 193774. This is 120 Brooklyn Avenue, located within the Crown Heights North Historic District. It's a Queen Anne style house designed by Henry B. Hill and built circa 1893. The application is to install a fence and pergola.
Good morning, Victor demonic preservation staff. As you had mentioned, this is 120 Brooklyn Avenue. This is a site plan. As you can see, the building is a corner lot at Bergen and Brooklyn Avenue. Here's the 40s tax photo. The 80s tax photo showing a chain link fence along the drive. And the proposal is to install a pergola at the side yard located here. This is a parking paid area. And then also to replace the existing chain link fence with a new taller one. The, and here to go for the detail.
Good morning. My name's Ann Hickey. I work for Direct Access Expediting, and I'm here representing the owner, the owners of a single-family home in Crown Heights North. So as you can see, it's on the southeast corner of Brooklyn Avenue and Bergen Street in the heart of the Crown Heights North Historic District. This is the photo from the 40s. And as you can see, there is an existing condition of the wall, the stone wall with coping stone on top around the corner of the building. This is a little atypical of the area because mostly there's brownstones here. This is a single-family on a corner lot, so it's wider. But it does keep with the architecture of the building, the Queen Anne style. Here in the 60s, there was a chain link fence put in as the bushes grow higher. And so that's actually behind the wall there. And what we're doing, we're proposing that the chain link be replaced with a wrought iron fence, which I'll show you in a little while. The building is built in 1839. There's been no major alterations to the building. It retains the single-family characteristics, and it is a Queen Anne style composed of brownstone and brick. This area was designated a landmark area in 2007. So what we're proposing here, as you can see, the retaining wall comes out onto the sidewalk along the stoop. That is existing. What we're proposing is to put in the pergola and to replace the chain link with the wrought So here is the existing elevation on the Brooklyn Avenue side. And there is an existing iron gate there. Stone wall there is, varies about two and a half to three feet high. And then with the chain link on top, comes out to about five foot. This is the Brooklyn, this is a proposed alterations to the Brooklyn Avenue side. This is the front of the building. We show a typical iron fence here. And that would be installed behind, behind the stone wall. And here's the pergola rendering. And then this is the existing Bergen Avenue side. There's an existing iron fence at the driveway. And so we're proposing to match that or to replace chain link, I mean, to replace the chain link with something that goes with the existing wrought iron. And so here is the proposed installation with pergola and chain link, I mean wrought iron. So our proposed height is a little higher. It's seven and a half feet. So, well, that's what we propose. Does that match the gate? Is that right? Well, yeah. It matches the gate to a degree. Now, we could also change the gate on the driveway if necessary to match exactly. But tell me what is seven feet six? Well, that's, that would be the standard size of the wrought iron fence that's available in the market. Okay, so this is like a standard landmark type wrought iron fence. And so the fence can be, there are other instances where wrought iron has been put in, in these historic areas. It's the type that we're proposing is in keeping with the landmark features. The pergola was also common at the time that this building was built, in the late 1800s, and aligns with the historical concept of the Queen Anne style. It adds some street presence to the building and adds some interest. So here is, appears to be existing. This is what it looks like right now. And as you can see, there's a wrought iron gate at the driveway. And this is what we would be proposing, to replace a chain link and to put in the pergola in the back. Now, this is one color that's recommended. It would match the color on the cornice there. Or this is the other color, which the community board wanted to see because it matches the roof and it's less obtrusive. This actually is right where the bus stops. And so it's part and parcel to keep more privacy in the yard due to the bus stop because there are regular people waiting there all the time for the bus. Okay, so once again, here is the historical photo. And here is the rendering of the photo with the pergola. So this is what it would look like on the Brooklyn Avenue side. The pergola would be set back into the side yard there. And then here is an example of another location in this historic district that has the wrought iron fence. And here's another example of that. So that's, that's it. Are there any questions?
Yes. Go ahead.
The fence and pergola, you refer to wrought iron steel fence. Is this square section steel, or is this actual wrought iron with cast iron finials on the top?
Well, it's actually, we had proposed a steel rather than wrought iron.
So it's not wrought iron?
Well...
You've referred to wrought iron several times, and I was curious to know, have you seen samples of this? Okay. The other question I have, is the purpose of the, that fence so that the owner doesn't have to look at regular people who are waiting for the bus?
No, actually, the reason I brought up the bus stop is because people throw trash in the yard right now. And they're actually climbing over the existing fence and picking apples in that side yard because there's an apple tree there. And so it's partially private and to keep people from trespassing.
Okay, other questions? Any other questions? Okay, we'll take testimony. We may have more questions afterwards. Barbara Zay.
Just have an open pass or further down the ton possible.
Barbara Zay of the Historic District Council. HDC takes issue with the proposed pergola, which would be extremely prominent directly on the corner, detracting from the view of this charming Queen Anne style house. Unfortunately, its material and color choice would also be incongruous with the style of the house, making it even more of an obstruction. While our committee does not object to the installation of an iron fence, we would suggest that the applicant study other fences in the neighborhood to ensure that its height is appropriate. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? The community board eight, let's see. All right, they have, I think, positive support, but they have changed, they've recommended changes, that the pergola should not be more than nine feet tall, the replacement fencing will be behind the stone wall of the areaway, and the eaves of the pergola will not extend beyond or over the stone wall, and the pergola will be painted gray instead of white. All right, I just have a few follow-up questions. So just in terms of the height of the fence, which is seven feet six, the other examples that you showed us, are they similar in height? Do you know what the height is of the other wrought iron fences?
Well, this one appears to be about six feet.
Well, it's six feet from sidewalk to the top of the fence. Is that how you're determining your height?
Right.
Yeah, seven feet six is from the, from grade.
Right. Well, the seven foot six is actually the two and a half feet average of the retaining wall plus the five, the five foot, which is the standard height for the wrought iron. So we were trying to duplicate this type of wall, but we wanted it to be a little higher because to keep from people from trespassing.
All right, I thought it was based on the standard that you can, you know, buy, so, but that's...
It is a standard height.
It's a standard height?
Standard height plus the two and a half feet of the retaining wall.
Right, isn't that what's driving it? Or is it...
Yeah, that's what's driving it.
Okay, but it's also, and also security.
For security. For security.
Okay, so that's, uh, so this is about six feet roughly. And the other one that you showed us?
Okay, so this is se-seven six. And, uh...
There was just one more example, I think. Okay, this is lower.
This one, you can't really tell. But if you see that, uh, the height of the retaining wall varies here. But the height of a fence remains, um, pretty much, uh, the same. So we were just trying to... Could you please...
Yeah, we'll get the risers on the steps and figure out how high the back foot of the fence is. Fence is back foot.
Right, and so the standard height that you're talking about is what? Is five feet of, uh, just, just trying to understand what it...
Well, we have, you know, we looked up what standard fencing is that's, um, on the market because, uh, yes, the economics play a, a part in this. If we had to replace with iron, with wrought iron, uh, I'm sure we would do that if it was recommended by committee. But economics, and I don't think the, the standards are really set in this neighborhood yet for this type of installation because it is from, it's only been landmarked since two thousand and seven. So we're kind of setting, setting a standard here.
Sorry, but I think, uh, but I, I think that's the reason why the commission's asking the question because right now perhaps the district doesn't have such high fences. May or may not, I don't think you've shown us that. And so for us to, uh, you know, replacing the chain link fence is a good thing, but I think for us to replace it, and as you noted, like, setting some kind of, I don't know, standard, but something that is appropriate for the neighborhood, one has to look at the height of the fence. And so I'm just trying to understand. I understand the economics of it and honestly want to go and buy custom heights, but I think probably you have it in a range, right? It's not just one height that...
Could you go back two slides, please? Yes, I'm, I agree with you. Do you see this fence here in the foreground? That does not look like a high fence. So I, just to speak to your...
Right, but I don't know that that building is, takes an entire corner, which is, would be like this, the sort of, the volume of four townhouses. So I think it's probably there...
That's a big building, that's a large building.
Across the way.
But look at it, you can see it's a brick building. It's a large...
I can't see, I can't tell.
Okay, well...
So, in other words, I've... I, I actually support the, the tall fence. And it has, I think it has something to do with the scale of the building, not so much what's on the market and not what's even in the neighborhood because as we say, there, there's, it's hard to determine at this point if there is kind of a standard.
Right, well...
Okay, so I'm in support of it.
Okay, all right, all right. Uh, just, uh, other commissioners, because I know some had sort of raised concerns about the height. I think it's just really about trying to find, find a height that, that is reasonable, but also is, you know, I just, I'm just not understanding. And I'm just like, some clarification, you talk about the standard, what is that standard? Is that this fence is going to be sitting on top of the, uh, the, the existing wall? Is that right? How is, I, and what is the, what's the range of heights? It can't be just one height that you get.
Right, well, I took a, a look around the neighborhood to see what else was in existence there. And for the most part, I would say you've got six foot height on the existing, um, fences there. But that's with it, with the fence being, um, put right into the ground. Now, here we have a situation, we have an existing condition where we have a retaining wall. And so in order to, um, put the fence in...
Sorry, it's, sorry, go ahead.
Put the iron, iron fence in, um, we were, uh, considering putting it on top of the retaining wall, uh, but the community board doesn't want it on the top of the retaining. So originally, the, the standard for the, the fence is like five foot. You know, you can get off, off the shelf. All right, so that's like a standard plus the two and a half feet of the retaining wall equals seven and a half feet high. All right?
But you don't think you can get a standard of, of four feet?
Four feet, well, I suppose, I suppose we could.
Well, even if you don't want to side up, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand. But because you have a lot of fences which are, you know, three feet, six inches or four feet. So that's, I'm just, I understand it's five, but I'm curious whether that was something that you explored. And if not, because you don't feel it, uh, it satisfies your need for security, then I think we should just understand that. I think, I'm just trying to understand what's motivating this.
Well, another thing is that the existing driveway gate is seven and a half feet. So we wanted to match that height, okay? And, uh...
Right, and I understand that because I asked that question and you said, no, we may have to adjust one height. I don't know, okay.
Well, okay, I'm sorry, yeah. Well, just looking back at the slides, you know, they just...
Okay. All right, other questions? Any other questions? All right, thank you. Uh, we'll close the hearing. All right, let's move to comments. Height of the fence appropriate, not appropriate?
I say appropriate.
I, I think I could accept it as is.
I just looked on the block and the rest of the houses on this side of the block don't have any fences at all that I can see. There is a house across the street that has a tall fence that, uh, is a kind of a, uh, similar, similar to this one. I personally, uh, would suggest that the fence height is okay, but I would request that it not be put in the front yard. Have it kind of run with the front facade of the house that you're enclosing the side yard with it and you leave the front yard more open, which is the more historical condition. Or go with a lower fence there.
Honestly, I think that, I don't know if that, I don't know what that achieves, that just put...
Well, it, it makes the front, it makes the, well, it basically encloses the side yard, which is the majority of the, of the yard. And it, it distinguishes between the front of the house, which is, you know, uh, generally considered to be the more formal facade. Uh, and it also is more contextual with that side of the block, so...
The nineteen forties photograph does show a fence in the front.
Commissioners, just to clarify, that, that tax photograph is a, is a montage. It's, it's a rather strange one. We don't usually see montages on top of a tax photograph, so that's not a historic condition. It did not have a fence, uh, historically, if you, if you look at the original photograph in front of you there.
I was looking at this one.
The applicant's put together a montage or rendering, but they did it on top of the historic tax photograph, which is not representing the existing condition. So you should ignore that in terms of it setting any precedent for a historic fence on the property.
All right, I think, you know, I mean, one thing is they have, look, they have, um, a chain link fence, which is awful, and, and that's grandfathered, and it already provides whatever security in the home. So I think this idea of sort of replacing an area that at least, uh, has been, existed for some period of time with a better fence, just conceptually is not a bad idea. And definitely a fence which is at least more historic in nature. So I think then the question is really whether the, what they're replacing it with in terms of its height. It's not the same height as the, as the chain link fence, which I think is lower. And so it's added height. And I think the commissioners should think whether that, that combination of getting a better fence, but the added height is appropriate. Yes?
I, I, I agree completely with Adi's, uh, depiction of this as, as the taller fence actually proportionally making more sense. And so I, I think I can agree with that. What, what I want to be sure of is that this is not a hollow, uh, square hollow steel fence with cast iron finials on top. That this is a wrought iron fence that replicates an historic fence, not some suburban faux wrought iron fence.
Okay, and I understand that they noted that they would, uh, you know, they'd be willing to work with that. When, I think she mentioned that, if it's once the commission considers wrought iron...
Willing is one thing.
Well, that'll be, like, right, right, yeah, that's what I mean. Okay.
I'd just like to say one other thing about...
Fence. And that is that, you know, originally, this building didn't have a fence. It just had a low retaining wall with, with bushes and landscaping. And, um, it's a beautiful building. And it, it, it fits in, it fit in contextually with the rest of the neighborhood. I'm looking at the neighborhood right now, um, on Google Maps. And, um, it's a very open, all the fencing is different. It's all low, including the building across the street, which happens to be a larger, uh, an apartment building that's at least six stories. So I would be a little more in favor of, does that, it doesn't have to be a low, low fence. And I certainly appreciate the, um, the desire to protect the property. I guess I don't feel like it should be higher than the existing fence. Well, these lovely homes, I guess, I, I don't feel comfortable putting them in a, you know, making them seem almost fortress-like. And I'm concerned that if the fence is, um, too large, it begins to project, too high, it would be, you know, begin to project that. And that would be out of keeping with the rest of the neighborhood, in my opinion.
Yes, Dan?
Yeah, uh, I, I feel that a fence in this particular location is appropriate, but I agree that if it gets too high, it, it does become intrusive. At the same time, uh, the switch to the, uh, cast iron, I told you it's going to be, uh, or the iron fence, the iron rod fence, excuse me, instead of, uh, a chain link is definitely going to be a positive one because of the, currently that's very, you know, you can't really see much of the facade. I don't know, I'm not sure where everybody's at on the pergola. I was thinking one way to address the pergola issue might be, uh, if we permitted, would be to have it, um, continue with the more open, uh, weave, so to speak, of the, of the wood so that you could look through it, which would give some privacy, but then maintain some ability to see, uh, the facade, which I think has to be our primary concern.
You're talking about the fence, uh...
I'm talking about the pergola itself because of the upper...
Right, right, no, but the fence that goes along with the pergola, right? You're talking about this white, uh...
The white, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that'd be, well, yeah. Excuse me, yes, I'm, I'm looking at that as part of the, of the pergola at this point. I don't mean the pergola itself, obviously. No, I'm thinking that the, the fence surrounding the pergola, uh, could be more transparent and that way you could have a pergola without it being, I mean, a fence around the pergola without it being so, um, you know, interrupting of the, the view of the facade. So that's a couple of thoughts on...
Although I would, uh, you know, at least raise the issue that why can't perhaps some of the privacy be addressed through just vegetation like it is right now? And I think that, uh, I think it's, it's the layering, which I think is, to me, kind of inappropriate. I think if we, you know, having a higher fence provides, um, their ability to, uh, you know, have more security on the site. I think with vegetation, it actually will be, uh, you know, it'll soften it. And I think that would work a long way and still give them some privacy. And, you know, the, the pergola on top would be better if it's lowered and not so like heavy and make it just a little bit of a lighter material. I think it's fine, even its location, I think, would be okay. But I, I think that just the solidity of it is, I think is, makes it, um, just, you know, uh, you know, detracts from the historic building. Yes?
I thi, I think that you're, you hit on it, and I wanted to just elaborate on what my view of what you said is. Or how I would integrate your, your thought into what I was thinking, which is, I think that the pergolas, the, the reason for the pergola is, is to deal with the bus. Okay, that's reasonable, I think. But I think that the problem is the la, the layering. So I think if you were to set the pergola in by a foot, you could fit hedges in between it. It would become a garden of, uh, element instead of being a facade element, a street wall element, and the whole issue would go away. You know, it should...
So it's like retain that, but...
Keep it solid, set it back by a foot or eighteen inches, get enough, there seems from the site plan to be plenty of room, get yourself a little zone for bushes that the, so that the, the pergola would read as part of the yard instead of part of the street wall. Um, and then you'd have your thing. And I think from a safety point of view, if the Olympian is going to scale the fence at seven, six, he, you know, at, at five feet, he'll scale it at seven, six. Most folks will be deterred by a, a five-foot fence. And I, I, I think that a five-foot fence would be much more in keeping with what one sees in the photographs and would feel less fortress-like to address, uh, Jean's concern. Um, and I would just say, keep, and, and if you're going to go to wrought iron, which is more expensive, cutting down the height would save you a couple of bucks too, because it's generally done by weight. So, um, I think that it would solve their issue, it would address Michael's concern and Jean's. And, and, you know, fences like this are really, they're, they're visual deterrents to say, go rob from the next guy, not me. If someone's intent on getting over a seven-foot-six fence, he or she will.
I think also it's, it's harder to climb this kind of fence. I mean, to go over it, it's, you're a little less likely to, with the spikes and so forth, than the chain link, which is pretty easy to go over. So, and I agree about the height.
Don't tell the landscapers that. Okay, so, um, all right, uh, just on, and this height of the fence is sort of going back and forth. Uh, you know, the only thing I would say is that I think it should be sort of based on something, using five feet. I don't know if five feet is the right height or it's six feet. But I think, how about it be awesome to work with staff to be no higher than the fence that they have right now? That would work? What they have right now? I don't know how tall that is, but how tall is that?
It's around six feet.
Five.
Five and a half, six feet.
Well, if you include the hedges, it's about six feet.
But if you don't, it's, uh...
Okay. So how about in that ballpark? It could be wrought iron. Yes, I'm trying to find a solution here that the commission can all sort of support. And, uh...
I would like to, you're, to your point, I would, I would like to recommend that the applicant work with staff, um, to reduce the height to a level that, um, makes sense in terms of the community, doesn't lower it so much that doesn't...
I just think that, you know, that everybody's had a different opinion here on what that is. And so we're talking about, I mean, if the staff feels that they can look around and survey that, but it's, I think it's better to give them some kind of direction as what is a height that's appropriate. I think that's within our purview.
Maybe say existing one or in the neighborhood, you know, this neighborhood.
The taller height is appropriate based on the scale of this building, I think. Um, I think, Jeannie, you're right, you were right that it was, it's a lovely house without anything. But putting in a kind of like a milquetoast between height is, is, I, I think is not, does not, um, is not in proper conversation with the building itself, with the house, with its scale, with its size, to have it be sort of an in-between, match the chain link fence. But the tall, the tall fence, I think, suits the house or nothing.
A five-foot fence, let's say, that's dropping at two feet, is not insubstantial.
Okay, so leave it at seven, six.
No, it's not.
Okay, I think that maybe, uh, you may be in the minority of, of keeping...
So, when I, when it's about six, six feet, it's something that's kind of, um...
I'm okay with six feet too. So, um, okay, let, we'll just get back to the fence. Let's talk about the pergola, it seems easier. Let me just start with the pergola. Are we okay with setting back the pergola so that they have, they can keep the, uh, opacity, but...
Dark color.
And they could, yeah, they could, I think the darker color is better. And they could put vegetation in between, but allow it to not feel like it's slapped up against the, the, the stone wall.
But you're killing the second fence, right? The inner, the inner white fence, we're killing that.
No, we're not.
That's awful.
That's awful. I mean, if the vegetation, if it's there for, it's there for privacy. And it's clearly what that fence is there for, it has nothing to do with security or anything like that, it's privacy. And the vegetation can easily cover the privacy problem and eliminate this sort of double fencing problem.
Well, I think, you know, I mean, it's, you want to say something?
Yeah, here's another problem. If you retain those panels and there is planting next to them, you're never going to be able to paint those panels. So it's because, it's going to be a maintenance nightmare and it's going to be rotting away in ten years. Nobody's going to paint.
Okay, what about?
One of the things I've seen is how we feel.
You know, at one level, this is a fairly modest proposal and it just, it really is. And I think we're, you know, I think we're going, it's, it's important, I'm not saying it's not important for us to sort of grapple with these issues, but the pergola is, ultimately it's a temporary structure and so there, maybe it'll be dismantled, who knows? So, okay, I'm going to make some recommendations and see how, wrought iron fence, height six feet.
Six feet in total, or six?
Yeah, six feet in total. Total. Okay, in terms of the pergola, we allow it to set back, painted in a color like gray tint or something, which is recede.
Or cedar, which will fade to gray, look like marron tucker, and they won't have the paint.
Okay, to work with maybe natural material that would allow it to be better maintained. And it can set back from, that actually solves that problem. And they'll work with staff on the profile of the top to make it about as heavy as it is. How's that?
Okay.
And that the, and so the pergola fence is actually in setback from the face of, from the lock line. All right. Is that you, Diana?
I hope so, okay. I'll make a stab and you'll correct me.
You'll do well, though.
In the matter of a certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Brooklyn, LPC 193774, 120 Brooklyn Avenue, Crown Heights North Historic District, application is to install a fence and pergola. I recommend, noting that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Crown Heights North Historic District, I recommend approval with modifications. Finding that the installation of the proposed wood pergola and metal fence will not damage any significant features of the building or site, and that the proposed metal fence along the area wall, areaway wall, will be simply designed in keeping with the design of iron fences historically found at buildings of this age and style, and will replace an existing chain link fence. However, I find that the prominent location in the side yard and the white finish of the proposed pergola and wood fencing are not consistent with historic features of side yards or buildings of this age and style, found in this historic district and will call undue attention to the insulation, and that the height of the proposed metal fence is somewhat excessive and will overwhelm the building and streetscape. Therefore, I recommend that the pergola be shifted closer to the building and the number of, be shifted closer to the building. That the pergola be finished a dark color or be left unfinished to weather to better blend with the building and side yard. And that the proposed metal fence be reduced in height to a total of six feet, including the areaway wall. And that the applicant work with his staff on the profile of the fence. Anything else?
Wrought iron.
I'm sorry?
Did we say wrought iron, not?
Yeah.
And I think there was a thought about the...
Wrought iron, used for the fence.
To simplify the, the end post or the details of the horizontal to...
Yeah, I'm sorry, meant, you know, the details of the, and work with the profile and the details of the fence, and which will be wrought iron. We got it? Hope so. Anything else?
Edit, Adana?
As far as I know.
Okay, second. All in favor? Approved.
Okay, item six is an application for a certificate of appropriateness, the Borough of Brooklyn, docket number 193542. This is 546 Carlton Avenue, located within the Prospect Heights Historic District. It's a Renaissance Revival style rowhouse designed by John H. Crown and built circa 1889. The application is to construct a rooftop addition and install windows.
Good morning, Commissioners. Timothy Shaw, Preservation Staff. 546 Carlton Avenue is located on the west side of Carlton, between Bergen and Dean Streets, within the Prospect Heights Historic District. The application is for the construction of a roof, new rooftop addition, and for the installation of new windows at the, sorry, at the lubored, existing lubored dormers at the roof. Alexandra Barker, the architect, will present the proposal in detail.
Hello, I'm Alexandra Barker. And so the general proposal for this project is to modify the building at the attic level in order to create habitable space. So in order to do that, we propose to partially remove the existing roof and replace it with a profile that is six foot six higher in the rear. The mansard roof, however, will remain the same in the front. We also are proposing a setback of twelve foot two for this new roof profile from the rear facade. We are showing an AC condenser on the roof. And in order to change this roof profile, we need to extend the chimney flues vertically to maintain the proper distance from the roof. And finally, we are proposing to replace the existing lubored openings in the mansard roof with fixed clear glass. These are the views of the existing conditions. Also included here is a historic photo of the building facade. The building is a Renaissance Revival style, one of a row of four. This is the zoning diagram showing that the new profile falls within the maximum allowable envelope for the building. These plans show the proposed work at the attic floor as well as the roof plan. You can see the existing mansard roof and the new roof. These drawings show the existing and proposed elevations. The lubored openings are noted as being replaced with blazing. Otherwise, there's no roof, no work on the front facade. These drawings show the scope of the work on the rear facade. Window replacement on the first floor is not visible from any public thoroughfare and is not subject to current review. These drawings show a cross-section of the existing and proposed attic level. The sightlines indicated in the drawings show that the new profile is not visible from Carlton Avenue. These are views of the side elevation from the point of view of the neighboring roofs and indicate that we are proposing gray stucco as the finish for the side of the new profile. This also shows where chimney extensions are required. These are photos of the mock-up showing the new profile. This site plan keys in the photos on the following pages. I'm going to go through each view for you. View A shows the front facade. You can see the existing conditions and a rendering of the proposed windows replacing the lube. The new roof profile is not visible. View B is looking down along Carlton Avenue toward Dean Street and shows there's no visibility for the new roof profile on this block. And view C, which is taken from the south side of Bergen Street, showing, shows a partial visibility of the new roof profile. This view also shows neighboring houses with roofs of a similar scale and profile to our proposed profile. And those are these two right here, as a comparison. In view D, we are looking along Carlton Avenue toward Dean Street from beyond Bergen Street, and this shows there continues to be no visibility of the new profile along Carlton Avenue when taken from further away. It also shows those same neighboring houses with similar roof profiles to our proposal from another angle. In view E, which is looking down Carlton but taken from the same side as the project address, there is still no visibility, though a high-rise development is visible from this In view F, which is taken from Bergen Street, it shows the rear of the building where the proposed work is located. There is partial visibility of the rear of the new roof file when the leaves are not on the tree directly in front of it. You can see that the new roof profile is dwarfed by the view of that high-rise building beyond it. You can also see the rear views of the neighboring houses with similar roof profiles. View G is from Dean Street, west of Carlton, and is outside the Landmarks District. And view H, which is taken from the intersection of Dean and Carlton, there is no visibility. View J is taken from Dean Street, east of Carlton, which is also outside the Landmarks District, and there is no visibility. And view K, which is taken from Carlton, looking south down the street toward Bergen, there's also no visibility. Here are the proposed materials and window details. On the left is an example image of stucco, which is the finish we are proposing for the side and rear of the new roof profile. We are proposing a light gray color. On the right is the proposed manufacturer and finish for the new windows and mansard
Just to clarify, there actually is, there is a bit of visibility here. See the mock-up there? This is on Dean, east of Carlton. See the gray in there? It's similar to, a little less visible than you here. And there's the mock-up, there's that. It's a little less visible than that, as confirmed by my site.
Okay, great. Are there any questions? Any questions? All right, we'll take testimony.
Barbara Z of the Historic District Council. While on first glance the impact of this addition seems minimal, its rear visibility from Bergen Street is significant. Our committee recommends taking steps to take down, to bring down the height and manipulate the materials in such a way that this addition becomes less glaring. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mary Schufert.
My name is Mary Schufert. I represent the Prospect Heights Neighborhood Development Corporation Committee on Landmarks On the whole, we find the proposed project does not significantly alter the building's character. However, we believe the following changes should be made in order to minimize the impact of the project as seen from the rear yard and Bergen Street. That the addition be clad in brick, that the condenser unit be relocated from the peak of the rooftop addition so as not to break the new roof line, and that the muttons proposed for the rear facade windows on all stories be eliminated. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Board also have a couple of comments. They said that the brick will be used in the, or these are the recommendations, will be used to finish the rear of the roof addition instead of stucco, since stucco would be visible on the rear facade. With AC condenser, the AC condenser will be relocated to reduce visibility from the street, and the three new enlarged first-floor rear facade windows will be without muttons. The owners agreed to the design changes. So has that been reflected in the proposal? Can you just go through that?
Sure.
I think it hasn't, but you've already taken that into consideration and...
So, these were our follow-up thoughts about this. We did talk about it with Tim. This, at the parlor level, the buildings behind this building don't face back-to-back because they, you know, they're facing the sides. There actually no, there's no windows from neighboring buildings looking at this facade at the parlor level. So it's, no one's looking at it, and it's not visible from the street. So we didn't think that it needed to be modified. With respect to the AC unit, we talked about whether there, there's another location, it could be, where it could be located, and if you locate it on the ground, then it might disturb the neighbors. So, it's a sound. So we thought that it was preferable to leave it on the roof.
Just put it on the lower roof? Like you're having?
You mean on, on the outside space?
On your terrace?
Um, that's possible.
Does it have that, like, disturb the neighbors because it would be closer to the bedroom windows?
Well, look, I mean, no matter where it is, you've got to comply with the sound code, so, you know, you'll have to check in your way.
Okay, are there other questions?
I just wanted to comment.
Yes.
This is the owner here.
Okay.
And she just let me know that she received a letter from the neighbors.
If you can, okay, if you can speak into the...
Kristina, you don't have all eight?
My name is Pamela Thomas. This is so nerve-wacking. It's like being at the, getting caught smoking in the, in the bathroom in high school and having to come in front of the Board of Education and apologize. I had a note from a neighbor asking specifically about the air conditioner unit and did not want it on the ground floor or on the terrace because it would impact her, so...
But isn't there, is there a wall separating your two? And this unit is quite small, right?
I don't know what size it is.
I mean, the way it's shown in the drawings, it doesn't look, so it's going to be, there's going to be a wall that separates it, and couldn't you find some ways to address noise?
You could also modify the roof profile to kind of make a little indent for it or something. I mean, there's ways to get it so it's not perching up there like a tent.
Yeah, I just want to comment on the roof profile question. We had several meetings with the GOV about the roof, and there are several different issues at stake with the profile. And we can't move the unit close, further down the slope because of fire code requirements. But I mean, obviously, we can take it off. But if it's on the roof, it has to be pretty much in that location.
Okay. All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, we can close the hearing. Yes, any, all right, yes, Kim?
I do think they have to work with staff to find a way to make that unit, AC unit, less visible, because that can't be the only place to put it at the very top of the building.
Okay, we can ask them to work with staff on that. Any other comments? Okay, no other comments? All right, Kim? So they'll, we'll ask them to work with staff to see if we can, to relocate the unit so it's...
Less visible.
Seem to be some options here, yes.
In the matter of 546 Carlton Avenue, Prospect Heights Historic District, application is to construct a rooftop addition and install windows. I recommend approval, finding that the construction of the rooftop addition will not damage any significant architectural features of the building, that the new addition will not be visible from Carlton Avenue between Bergen and Dean Streets, and therefore will not detract from the overall, or overwhelm, the special architectural features of the front facade, that the new addition will be set back significantly, significantly from the front, from the rear facade, and will preserve the sense of the building's original scale and volume and its relationship to the row, that the finistration of the addition with multi-light pairs of doors will only be obliquely visible from Dean and Bergen Streets, across neighboring rear yards, and will be consistent with the scale and character of the house. That while the addition will be highly visible seasonally across the rear yards from Bergen, west of Carlton, it will be seen primarily against the backdrop of tall apartment buildings outside of the Historic District along Dean Street and Carlton Avenue, and will diminish the addition's visual impact. That the other... the addition's visual impact, that the other houses within the block have historic rooftop additions of similar size, therefore the addition will harmonize with the complex roofscape, that the extension of the chimney flues will not detract from the special architectural character of the building or row, that the replacement of the louvers at the mansard roof opening with new windows will be in keeping with the dormer windows found in buildings of a similar age and style, and that the work will not detract from any significant architectural features of the building. However, I find that the peak of the roof is an atypical location to install an AC unit, and the proposed installation at this location will be highly visible from the street, that the gray stucco finish will call undue attention to the new addition, therefore I recommend that the AC unit be relocated to another location at the building or rear yard to reduce or eliminate its visibility, and that the addition be clad in standing seam metal.
We didn't have that.
Okay.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
May opposed. Application's approved.
Okay, Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is Item 7. It's an application for a certificate of appropriate as the Borough of Manhattan, Docket Number 197121. This is 541 Broadway, located within Soho Cast Iron Historic District. This is a neoclassical-style store and loft building designed by Charles Medham and built in 1869. The application is to construct a ramp and legalize the replacement of vault lights with diamond plate and the installation of a flagpole and intercom without Landmarks Preservation Commission permit, permits.
Good morning, Commissioners. Abby Harlby, Preservation Staff. This application is for work at the building at 541 Broadway, which is located mid-block between Prince and Spring Streets in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District and bounded on the east by Broadway and the west by Mercer Street. This building received a special permit pursuant to Section 74711 of the zoning resolution for the modification of use at the building in 2001. So this application is to install a ramp at Broadway and legalize the removal of cast iron vault lights at Broadway in non-compliance with Certificate of No Effect 02-0243. So now, the commission had approved the removal of the vault lights, but this was in conjunction with the installation of new cast iron covers and steps. The proposal also includes work at the Mercer Street facade, including relocating an intercom and keypad at Cast Iron installed without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits, and to legalize a flagpole also installed without LPC permits. So the applicant is here to discuss this project in detail.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Richard Moses from Howard Zimmerman Architects, and as Abby indicated, we're applying to install a new accessibility ramp and to legalize the installation of some minor facade pertinences that we feel are typical of the Soho streetscape and in keeping with the area's long conversion from manufacturing district to retail ground floor with residential use above. The building went through the 74711 process in around 2001. The owners have been diligent in restoring the building to a first-class condition and maintaining it that way, as well as agreeing and having every intention to maintaining it that way in the future. We feel that the minor alterations that we're proposing basically reflect certain practical necessities of living and doing business in Soho in the 21st century, but nonetheless do not diminish the building's first-class condition or historic character. So Jared Cole from HLZA will walk you through the application. Thank you.
Jared Cole from Howard Zimmerman Architects. First, I'll go through some context and some historical context of the building, and then I'll run you through the different items that we're applying for. As Abby and Richard mentioned, we're in the Cast Iron District between Mercer and Broadway. The building has ground floor retail spaces on both of those streets, so, and we're applying for items on both sides of the building. So first, I'll start with the Broadway Street items. And before I get into that, I just wanna show some historic photos of the Broadway Street facade, and I wanna draw attention to the ground floor retail spaces. As you can see, the character of these, the ground floor retail storefronts has, have changed over the years, and we feel that the, the minimal modifications that we're proposing are not out of character with the, the transformation of the storefront throughout the years. Just to give you some context of the streetscape, the photo on the left is taken looking north from Spring Street, and you can see our building is near the middle of the image with the black awnings. The photo on the right is taken at street level from Prince Street, and you can see a closer-up view of our storefront with the black awnings. The photo on the left shows that, shows the 541 Broadway facade, and our building is actually part of a mirrored facade. The property that we're going to be presenting on today is outlined in the blue dotted line on the right there. The photos on the right just show a close-up view of the storefront that I'll be getting into. As Richard mentioned, the building underwent extensive restoration in 2013. A lot of this included cleaning the cast iron, repairing the cast iron, infilling at areas that were damaged. The work turned out beautifully, and the residents are very happy with the state of their building. Now I wanna get into the first item that we're applying for, which is a wheelchair entrance ramp to the commercial storefront at 541 Broadway. The photo on the left is an enlarged image of this storefront. As you can see, it consists of three bays. There's a fourth bay all the way to the right with the numbers 541 above it. That's the residential entrance. The building consists of commercial on the ground floor and residences above, so we're gonna be focusing just on the commercial portion. The dashed green line shows the approximate footprint of the ramp and steps that we're proposing. These are two plans. The top plan is the existing condition with the entrance doors located on the center bay indicated by a red arrow, and the bottom plan is showing our proposed single-run wheelchair ramp. And to get the, the amount of run that we need, we would need to relocate the entrance doors one bay to the south, and that modification is indicated with the red arrow. I will show you an enlarged view of that same proposed plan, and I wanna note that due to active litigation, the client has looked at several options before arriving at the single-run ramp. We at first proposed a switchback ramp, which was rejected by the community board, and we got unfavorable feedback from the LPC staff because of the amount of the sidewalk that obstructed. So, the most feasible option that we came up with, we also looked at the idea of an internal ramp, but directly below these entrance doors is a complex web of mechanical air handling equipment. There's two large air handling units directly below the storefront, and there's a maze work of ductwork directly below. So due to the amount of MEP modifications and structural modifications, we found it unfeasible to install an interior ramp. And just to shed a little more light on this, this is a schematic section on the left through the, through the storefront, showing the proximity of the mechanical equipment directly below, and the two photos on the right show how much equipment is down there and how closely it's installed next, under the slab of the ground floor. These two elevations show, the elevation on the left shows the existing facade as it is. The elevation on the right is our proposed modifications at the storefront with the wheelchair ramp, and I'll show you an enlarged image of that, of those two elevations. The elevation on the top, again, is the existing condition with the store, the existing entrance doors indicated by the red arrow. The bottom elevation shows the proposal to move those doors one bay to the south, and you can see the proposed wheelchair ramp in front of the storefront as well. As you'll notice, the signage and the awning will remain in place. The existing doors, we will try to reuse the existing doors when we relocate them or replace them in kind to match the existing style and size of the doors. The center bay, the center bay will be infilled with storefront window to match the size and profile of the existing window, and then down here at the bottom, we will be relocating a mechanical grill that used to be at this bay. So the storefront will, will look very similar to how it does now with the exception of the relocated doors, and our entrance ramp, as you can see, has a very low profile, and we believe these modifications are relatively minor. In terms of materials for the ramp, we're going to construct it out of steel. We're gonna use diamond plate as a surface and an infill on the sides where possible to match the existing diamond plate that's on the, over the sidewalk vaults, which is shown in the, in the top photo. The bottom photo shows the existing storefront infill on the left and a sample photo of a similar railing style to what we would propose for our ramp on the right, and we're proposing to paint that railing to match the, the storefront infill. These are some ramp precedents in the Soho District. At the time that I, that I researched this, there were not any ramps installed on Broadway. These are all on site streets, but you'll see that most of them are built out of diamond plate with a similar tubular rail as what we're proposing. So that covers the, the wheelchair ramp, wheelchair ramp portion. Our next item is diamond plate legalization on the Broadway side, but part of what I wanna point out with this plan also in talking, in speaking to the diamond plate, is that you'll notice that when we install this ramp and these steps, it's going to cover a significant portion of the existing diamond plate that's, that's currently installed. The diamond, there was a structural collapse on the Broadway side in 2001 that took down a lot of the vault structure and the, the previous vault lights, which is one reason why they were replaced with diamond plate. These are some contextual photos to show you, again, the diamond plate that's currently installed on the Broadway side, and the photo on the top right shows the reinforced and rebuilt structure underneath that after the 2001 collapse. Again, these are some photos on Broadway showing our storefront in relation to the diamond plate that's currently installed. In looking up and down the block at the different sidewalk materials and vault cover materials, we determined that, you know, a significant portion of the materials are diamond plate, roughly 40% on the block of the vault covers are diamond plate, and roughly 10% are vault lights. So we feel that retaining the existing diamond plate that's there is not out of character with the district. Now I'll take you back to the Mercer Street facade, the back facade of this building, where the first item we're applying for is the legalization of this existing intercom that's installed. We are proposing to move it on the, sorry, getting ahead of myself. On the right, on the left photo here, you'll see its existing position, and on the right photo, this is a proposed relocation of that intercom around the corner. We're proposing to relocate it and paint the portions that are paintable to match the color of the existing cast iron. We feel this is a less obtrusive, visually obtrusive option than what exists right now. We looked into the idea of mounting the intercom on the wood infill around the door, but I wanna point out that the, the left portion of the door here is actually an operable light that the building uses to move tenants, residents in and out of spaces, because through this door is, is an elevator for the residence use. So mounting it on the, the wood infill was, was not a good option. If we mount it to the right side of the door, then we're creating an unsafe condition for people trying to access the intercom, particularly people in wheelchairs. These are some photos of context at the, the Mercer Street diamond plate that we were asked by staff to include in our presentation, just to indicate that there are no existing vault lights on the Mercer Street side. The final item that we'd like to apply for is legalization of this existing flagpole on the Mercer Street facade. It's for the, the commercial tenant on the ground floor here, and I just wanna show some photos looking north on Mercer, and you can see the, the ubiquity of flags installed along Mercer, so we don't feel that our flag is out of character with what currently exists in the district in that area.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any questions? Right, we'll take testimony. Barbara Z.
So the owner would like to speak. Can they speak before the, before public speaks, or do you want them to go after?
They can speak, but just very briefly.
Okay. All right. My name is Robert Schufert. I am the president of Noah Realty, which is an eight-unit co-op on 541 Broadway and 112 Mercer. To put this into context, we have been in litigation in federal court for two years regarding this ramp. We've gone through multiple examinations with multiple architects in terms of trying to figure out how to do something that's less intrusive. It is physically not possible. It is economically not possible. Part of the issue that we have is there is now currently 35% vacancy, availability rate of retail spaces between Broadway and Canal Street, and we are trying desperately to maintain our retail tenants that give us the financial ability to maintain the building in the condition that we've maintained today. So we are looking to maintain that, and also, both of our tenants are looking to sublet their spaces, so there will be a roll, in all likelihood, probably in February of next year, at which time we'd like to implement this work at the same time.
Okay, thank you. Barbara?
Barbara Z. of the Historic Districts Council. Where possible, as a rule, HDC advocates for the in-kind replacement of vault light covers, a special feature in the side, on the sidewalks of former manufacturing districts like Soho. In the application before you, on the Broadway side of the building, the proposed ramp would cover many of the existing lights, so the scope of this work would not be significant. However, the impact of keeping the historic appearance by replacing the vault light covers with cast iron to match the originals would be significant, so HDC asks that their in-kind replacement at this relatively small section of sidewalk be required. We would also advocate for the same treatment on the Mercer Street side. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Mark Dykes.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mark Dykes. I get that all the time, don't worry about it. I'm from the Soho Broadway Initiative. We're the not-for-profit that manages the Business Improvement District along Broadway in Soho. We run from Houston Street to Canal, and we are here specifically in regards to the accessibility ramp. While the initiative supports the mandates of the ADA and the need to provide disabled access to buildings, we do not support the installation of this ramp. As staff and I think the applicant noted, there are no ramps of this character on Broadway. It is a busy thoroughfare. We have six subway stations, over 110,000 passengers using those subway stations every day, sightseeing buses, office tenants using the sidewalk. It's a very busy part of the city on a relatively narrow sidewalk, about 17 and 1/2 feet. So congestion is our primary, primary concern. Obviously, historic character, we think is gonna be impacted, and what we see in the district as an alternative, while we... And what we see in the district as an alternative, while we, while we noted that it appears the installation of an interior ramp is not feasible due to the presence of mechanicals, we see other businesses using a buzzer with a ramp, with a ramp solution, or, or some sort of mechanical device, not putting down something on the sidewalk that would be an impediment to pedestrian flow. So we ask that the application be denied and that they explore a couple of different alternatives that don't involve the installation of a sidewalk ramp. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on the side? All right, community four-two recommends denial of the ramp, but approval of the diamond plate sidewalk and flagpole and intercom. And while they support and encourage implementing accessibility, they also, the owner, look at other options because of the pedestrian travel on Broadway. We also received four letters in opposition, various members of the communities saying that proposed ramp and storefront alterations were out of context for the historic district.
I think I still don't entirely understand what, why it is that a majority of, of the ramp can't happen inside. Sort of if it were to start on the outside of the, of the outside most face of the columns and sort of, and, and then add, remove some material but add some height on the interior of the space.
I think you have to low, you have to lower the, lower the floor.
But do you? I'm just.
If you go back to the section, I'm going to let them answer the question, but that's what I.
Because I'm looking at it in plan and I'm not entirely understanding. Plan, page.
Richard, you want to explain that? Okay.
So, get back to the section here.
So at this point, just clarify for a second, in dimensions, because I don't see it. From, from the street ground to the ground of the interior, to the floor of the interior, what is that height?
About fourteen inches.
Fourteen inches is what we're talking about? Right? Okay.
But it still requires, you know, the structural modifications, bringing the ceiling down. And all the equipment is so jam-packed against the ceiling of the vault area and here, I mean, next to the vault area, the equipment is all just packed in so that everything would have to be removed, relocated.
But I'm not saying that. I'm asking about building a ramp above.
But you have to get the.
Right, but you have fourteen inches and you have, what is the depth in plan between the outside face of the column and the, and the storefront?
About thirty inches.
Thirty inches. So I, I don't know what the twelve, what the one to twelve is on that, but it's, it seems like you, you don't have to cut from, there's some middle level.
See, we find that if we, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we find that if we have to do any cutting, that, that, that has structural, structural ramifications. And so we would have to put in new beams and do significant work in the, in the cellar area below, which would all mean moving the mechanical out of there.
And by code, we need a fourteen-foot ramp to get the fourteen-inch rise. And we need a landing in front of it, behind the door if the ramp were to be partially on the outside.
A landing behind and in front of it.
The landing takes up a significant portion of the space, too. And if you break the ramp up into multiple components, you have to keep that landing every time you break it.
Right. And, and the idea of actually doing something to the storefront itself, which is to push the door in further into the space.
It's the same problem.
Is it?
Yeah. You have to drop the floor down fourteen inches and now you're into the structure of the building and interrupting all of the mechanical design that was below. You can't put mechanical things underneath it. Commissioner, if I may?
Yes. If you can speak into the microphone.
We have, we have been in federal court for two years.
Right.
Okay. We have gone through seven different options on this, and none of these prove economically viable, or we will lose our tenants, we'll lose our ability to actually finance this work. So we've gone through, you know, we've gone through every possible solution, and we are under federal mandate by court to submit to the D O E by people for, for this solution.
Okay. Yes, Michael?
I have a question about the neighboring building. It looks like they're going to have the same problem sooner or later. And I know it's not necessarily this owner's building, I don't know if it is or not, but one thing that we have seen in cases where there are multiple storefronts that are served by a single ramp is that you kind of get a replication of the loading dock effect. And I was wondering if that would be technically feasible, given that, I assume, dual ownership on this case, could this ramp be eventually extended for use by them when, when they hit this need?
If we have the same requirement.
So could they use your ramp?
Yes.
And may, and just extend it and make like a loading dock?
In other words, just extend the landing to the next bay.
Would that be legal, doable?
You have the, the five thirty-seven. What do we want?
I want, I want the elevation five thirty-seven. So.
Well, you can kind of see.
You kind of see.
There's an elevation that shows it.
Yeah, if they have to do the same thing, they would have to move their door to the door side.
What I'm, what I'm suggesting is, is could they legally attach a loading, a, a platform to yours so that they could use your ramp to get into their store?
Possibly.
Is that, is that legal?
There are two different owners.
That's what I was asking. It's a, it's a legal question, and I guess a code question.
Right. The interesting issue is like if that, the next building is looking to provide a ramp, then at that time, is there a way to work with this ramp already in place and extend its landing?
Right, I'm just, it's a legal question. I mean, do you know, Mark?
Can we require it? I don't know.
I think one issue, I, I don't know, but I think one issue, like I was saying, is people who want to enter both buildings would potentially enter from the right door and then cross in front of this door in their wheelchair to get, to continue the platform.
Which we've done many times, when it's the same owner, but not when it's different owners. So the question is, is it, is it, because for me, part of a mitigating factor to this would be if it were to be used in a way that was A, more typical of the district, and B, more generally aesthetically efficient, so that you didn't have multiple ramps and lifts going on down the road. It would be more kind of, I think, appropriate to the district if it could be used in that way, and it would kind of mitigate the impact that this.
Maybe.
One thing would have, I think. And I'm just asking if that's feasible.
And what about the residential entrance? Is there a difference in height between the, yeah, right, but is the, is the commercial space higher at that level, too?
Does the residential entrance?
I have to speak into the microphone.
The residential entrance is flush with the street.
Right.
The commercial entrance, the commercial entrance is up fourteen inches.
Right. But at the point inside of the residential entrance, would you be, is, is the cutting through that material the same complication?
It's the same, it's, it's worse, in fact, worse.
It's worse.
It's worse because there's no ADA clearance with inside the residential entrance.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, what about this buzzer version that someone spoke about?
Right, so I don't know what that buzzer, do you know what the?
It's an intercom.
Oh, I thought they had to do some kind of a lift or.
Right, so we've seen mechanical lifts. They have their own pros and cons, I would say. But can you speak to these other methods? So it's not just about where you put the ramp, but other ways of providing access.
So we looked at an external, external lift. The problem is that they require a landing. There is no landing. So we would need a, is it a four-foot landing?
Five.
A five-foot landing. So we would still have to extend out into the street with a mechanical, with a mechanical rip. So it's basically, you know, there are a couple examples around the Soho Cast Iron District, there's one on Mercer and Center Street, I believe. But it's got, you know, it has a five-foot landing at the top. Doesn't work.
Well, it will also sort of, basically, it'll be, it'll extend it to the sidewalk the same way that this does. So it's kind of, it's similar from that perspective, but it has different dimensions to it.
It has different dimensions, and you would still have to build a landing out into Broadway.
Okay.
And the, the other part of it is, is it would really impede the part of the visibility of the retail, which is very, very important to the area.
Just explain that because it would be.
It's an obstruction from the glass.
It's an obstruction of the glass because you have that.
If we obstruct the glass, the tenant's going to come back to us and ask for renovation, which impedes our ability to maintain this.
Okay, and do you know what the other method was, which is the opposite, Ari, that you said, the bells and the, there was something, the buzzer? Maybe it's the same thing. It's the same thing?
Rolling out a ramp, was that the idea? That wouldn't be a compliant option unless it was a fourteen-foot ramp with a landing.
The ADA requires that people in wheelchairs are self-sufficient.
Right, it didn't seem to make sense.
And by way of illustration, we also, in federal court, the, the building, right, the retail is now accessible, not to the total letter of the ADA law, but there is a suitcase ramp, there is a buzzer. The plaintiffs are refusing to accept any other measures other than a physical compliance, and then we'll talk about the other factors.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other questions? All right, we can close the hearing.
Commissioners, could I address the vault light issue very briefly? As Abbyan mentioned, this building has a special permit that was issued in, in 2001, and part of the requirements for that special permit was restoring approximately a hundred and ten vault lights on the Broadway facade. The special permit allows them to have the legal retail use on the ground floor. That work was not done, and so a violation was issued. The staff recommendation is that because the proposed ramp, if it's approved by you, is at the location where the vault lights were to be restored, that in lieu of that, vault lights be installed on the other side, on the Mercer Street side of the building.
But the Broadway lights are brought into, brought to Mercer Street?
Well, they're gone. They, they collapsed.
They were destroyed.
So there'd be, new vault lights would be installed on the other facade.
Is that what the applicant's asking for today, or no?
No, they're asking to legalize the removal of the vault lights.
Okay.
Okay. If you know other questions, we can close the hearing. All right, comments? Yes.
I think that the ramp on Broadway would be acceptable if the applicant would grant an easement to the, to, to future people to use it so we could extend it. I think it is, it is pretty much what's required. I would also ask the applicant to work with staff to make sure the railing is minimal profile. Their railing is showing a kind of a more utilitarian profile, and some of the ones that they showed in the images were a little slimmer and less obtrusive. I think the, the location of the intercom relocation is acceptable to me. I think that the flagpole should be removed. I think that ubiquity is not an argument for appropriateness. I think that generally speaking, the trend that the commission has been to try to, over time, reduce the impact of banners and flagpoles and things like that in this district, which I think is a good thing. I think that the suggestion about the vault lights is, is, is very good. If this building was restored on a seventy-four, seven-eleven, and that was, that, that a restoration of vault lights was a part of that scope, I think that the relocation to, to Mercer Street of new vault lights is, is a great idea and should be, should be part of our approval.
Okay. Okay, so the only thing I would just, this issue of like granting an easement, can you speak to that?
Yeah, I feel very comfortable about the commission conditioning its approval here on granting an easement for some future use. I think that the commission can incur, if in the future the neighboring building needs a, you know, there's, there's no, you know, we've, this is a building that while, yes, it looks, it, it is designed to look like one, it is in fact always been, it's been two, and, and there are legal differences. And I think we can't require this owner to accommodate access to a neighboring storefront.
So I think, you know, these, these situations are hard for us, and, and we've seen other situations in SoHo where there's litigation and people have introduced ramps. This happens to be on Broadway, and that sort of complicates it as well. But I think that they seem to have exhausted options in terms of trying to find a ramp or providing barrier-free access. So I think in this particular case, I think we should support it, and we should, you know, make sure that the look and feel of the ramp is, and working with staff in terms of the material as well as the profile, so that it fits in or receives as much as possible. And I think the idea of providing the vault lights on Mercer Street is, is an appropriate way of balancing some of the effects of having the ramp on Broadway and still recalling some of the historic fabric that existed within the site overall. Any other comments? I think the, the flagpole, I don't feel strongly about it, but I do agree with Michael that we've looked at it, there are certain cases, there was, I think, a policy in general not to allow the proliferation of these flagpoles. Often we have, may have approved it, but it's typically where there's historically been a black pole somewhere on the building, maybe not that particular location. But I think, again, in this particular case of the seventy-four, seven-eleven, it has kind of a higher standard. It is about trying to go back to as much as its historic condition, and perhaps within that context, this flagpole is not going to exist. So I think we're going to easily remove that. Is that a good package? All right, Michael?
Regarding five forty-one Broadway in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, the application is to construct a ramp and legalize the replacement of vault lights with diamond plate and the installation of a flagpole and intercom without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architecture and historic character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. I recommend approval of modifications. Finding that the proposed ramp and railings would be simply designed in the minimum overall size to require, required to provide barrier-free access at this entrance, that although the existing diamond plate cover and steps do not match, okay, historic cast iron installations and alternative location for the restoration of vault covers, which would not be concealed by the ramp, exists at the Mercer Street side of the site, that the materials and details of the existing diamond plate covers and steps and proposed ramp and railings relate well to the industrial character of the building and historic district, the black gray finishes of the existing cover and steps and proposed railings are in keeping with the historic finished palette of the steps, vault covers and other metal streetscape features typically found in industrial buildings of this age, that the proposed storefront infill will only replace modern infill and will be unified in composition in keeping with infill historically found in buildings of this type, style and age in terms of design materials, details and finish, and that the relocation of the grills at the bulkheads will maintain these features which replicate historic elements in an equivalent location without detracting from any significant historic features. I find that the intercom and keypad are small in size and will be discreet in placement. However, I recommend that the cast iron vault lights, light covers be installed at the Mercer Street sidewalk, matching historic covers that had existed in this location instead of on the Broadway sidewalk where the ramp is to be installed, that the flagpole be removed, and that's it.
Second, all in favor? All opposed?
Okay, Commissioners, item eight on the agenda is an application for a certificate of appropriateness to the Borough of Manhattan, docket number nineteen, five-five-two-five. This is one thirty-eight Fifth Avenue located within the Ladies Mile Historic District, twentieth-century commercial-style converted dwelling designed by Lawrence Wyer Jr., built in eighteen forty-seven and altered in nineteen nineteen. The application is to legalize the installation of a light fixture without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, Stephanie Krab, Preservation Staff. This item is one thirty-eight Fifth Avenue located on the west side of Fifth Avenue in the Ladies Mile Historic District. The proposal before today is the installation of a light fixture without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. The applicant. The applicant, Mary Dierks, is here to present the proposal and answer any questions.
It's now afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Mary Dierks, and I'm the preservation consultant for this project. This was originally an 1840s row house that had a major alteration in 1919, and then again, in the sometime between the 60s and the 80s, made it look the way it does today. It's not really a typical building for the district. This, what, this is to legalize the, the light fixture. So there it is. This is the context. This is what it used to look like. Here, around then and before then, this had a big sign on it, that had been filled with a big sign. So this fixture, this was originally a pop-up store, and the applicants should not have put in that fixture, but they thought they were going away very soon, then they liked the space and decided to stay. It's a modest fixture. They like it because it lights the letters completely and very nicely. It fills kind of a big blank space. It helps fill the big blank space that at one time had a big sign. These are the details, details. There is a light fixture like this in the district, a couple of blocks down, and this is now a light fixture that the, the store is using, it's part of their brand now, and they're using it, beginning to use it on other stores. That's really, there are, the, this is going to be legalized, it's neon, it's now set back 18 inches. These are just decals, not, not neon, and they're going to be part of the, the permit process, too.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Any questions?
How far out is that Aldo sign projecting from the...
The Aldo sign is less, is less far. I've seen it, I would say it's at least about a foot. Amy Scherson is the architect.
Yes, it's about a foot and a half, and we're proposing to go two foot four. As it's all...
Okay. Any other questions? Are there any speakers on this item? Any speakers? The Community Board Five recommends disapproval of this application to legalize the exterior lighting, because the design is inharmonious with the exterior lighting fixtures in the historic district, as well as being historically inappropriate. All right, do we have any other questions? Okay, we can close the hearing. Comments? Yes.
I don't think it should project any further than the Aldo sign.
All right, other comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead first.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, go ahead, I was saying first.
You know, it, I agree with what you're saying, Michael, that shouldn't project so far out. I think the issue is that it looks so, it's almost fragile in comparison to the building, and so I just feel like what, you know, for example, the Aldo building light and what you did in Westport, it just has a little bit more weight to it. Otherwise, I don't have a problem with a light, you know, it's just, I think it needs a little tweaking.
All right, yes, Tana?
Yeah, I was just going to comment that, one, yes, I agree with, it shouldn't stick out as far, any farther than the Aldo light, and actually, on the left, the, I think part of it is that it, it needs to, if it, if it looked a little more structural and had some color to it, in other words, the one on the left looks better, to me anyway, because it's got, it's got the gray cover that goes with the exterior, and it, it seems to fade in or look a little more appropriate than the one on this side. So maybe work with the staff on making it...
And not project as much? Is that what I'm hearing?
Project less and look heavier.
I don't think it's that either.
Look a little heavier.
And the one on the left looks heavier to me. I don't know whether it, you know...
All right, but it seems that some of the Commissioners wanted to not project more than the Aldo sign, is that right? Okay. All right, I think it's very discreet, and I think that this, it's overall such a discreet sign. I think, you know, there may be things about this storefront that is not as sophisticated or not as nicely designed as the other one, but I'm not sure it's the signage that's driving that, it seems to be other things as well. However, the Commissioner feels that that it's better that we work with staff to reduce the projection, we can ask them to do that. Michael?
In the matter of 138 Fifth Avenue in the Ladies Mile Historic District, an application to legalize the installation of a light fixture without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the installation of a light fixture will eliminate any, won't eliminate any significant historic fabric. The light fixture has been installed in a location that corresponds to the building entrance, and that there is no visible electrical conduit, and the installation of the light fixture has not diminished the special historic or architectural character of the building or the Ladies Mile Historic District. However, the projection of the linear light fixture calls undue attention to its presence, and the applicant will work with staff to reduce the projection of the light fixture.
Okay. Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Applications approved. We are, we are, we'll break for lunch, and we'll be back at 1:00.
It's an application for certificate of appropriateness, the Borough of Manhattan, docket number 196837. This is 137 Riverside Drive, located within Riverside West End Historic District. This is a neo-Renaissance-style apartment building designed by Charles E. Berg, and built in 1906 to '07. The application is to install a barrier-free access lift.
Good afternoon, Bridgette Tummane, Preservation Staff. This is 137 Riverside Drive. Here is a current photo. As you see, there is a below-grade area that surrounds the building. The applicant is proposing to install a platform lift to the left of the main entry in this location here. There is an existing stairs with a pipe railing, as you can see in the top drawing. They would replace the railing and then install a platform lift. Platform lift would sit at the bottom of the areaway, so it'd be largely non-visible, it's not in use. Here are a couple of detailed drawings. So here is the existing steps going down, it is being stored in this area here.
Which is going to be painted, what color is it?
It's going to be painted to match the stone, so like a tan color. And it looks like the applicant's not here for lunch, so...
Okay. Are there any questions? Any questions? All right, we have, let's see, one speaker? Brianna? Brianna Breaker?
Brianna Breaker from Landmarks West. The Landmarks West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee supports efforts to increase access to all buildings and facilities for all New Yorkers, including those who are mobility-challenged. It is important that applicants take steps to increase accessibility while at the same time making those modifications in a manner that is appropriate to the landmark status and character of the specific structures involved. While this proposal may address immediate local needs, the C of A Committee suggests that the applicant should consider whether it satisfies the federal ADA requirements regarding equitable access. It would be unfortunate to complete this work only to find that it fails to do so. These concerns spurred a broader discussion regarding the compliance and the potential future need for ADA master plans across our districts. The C of A Committee finds the proposal appropriate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on the item? Right, Community Board Seven recommends approval. Do we have any questions for the applicant? We can close the hearing. Are there any concerns with the proposal? It's found a very discreet location on the site to install it, and the color will blend with the facade. Okay.
In the matter of docket 19-6837, 137 Riverside Drive, Riverside West End Historic District, the application is to install a barrier-free access lift. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Riverside West End Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the installation of the barrier-free platform lift will occur within the below-grade areaway and will be partially screened by the areaway wall, helping to mitigate its visual presence, that the installation of the lift is easily reversible, that the proposed gray-finished platform lift will blend with the limestone base of the building, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special historic or architectural character of the building, the streetscape, or the district.
All in favor? Any opposed? Applications approved.
Commissioners, the next item is item 10 on the agenda. It's an application for certificate of appropriateness, the Borough of Manhattan, docket number 193302. This is 275 Central Park West, located within the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. It's a neo-Renaissance-style apartment building designed by Emery Roth and built in 1930 to '31, and the application is to enlarge a rooftop bulkhead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Leanne Pollock, Preservation Staff. This item is 275 Central Park West, located on the southwest corner of Central Park West and West 88th Street, in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. The proposal is to enlarge an existing elevator bulkhead and to add a vestibule. The bulkhead and small portions of the vestibule will be visible from Central Park West, West 87th Street, and locations within Central Park. Architects Nick Malone and Jeremy Welsh are here to elaborate and to answer any questions. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Nick Malone from Malone Architects. As Leanne mentioned, this is an Emery Roth building, built in 1930, we're in the Central Park West, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. Our proposal is to extend the bulkhead by approximately 10 feet to accommodate a roof stop for the elevator. The elevator is currently being modernized. This is a, the pedestrian site diagram, we, we're minimally visible from certain parts of Central Park West, particularly to the, to the north, which I can show you in a minute. The, the areas where we're most visible are from a few vantage points in the park, the bridle path, and some of the access roads. This view on the upper left is from, is from the reservoir. The, one of the things I think that's working in our favor is there's a large bulkhead that houses the water tower and second bank of elevators to the, on the northwest portion of the roof, so there's very few spots where our extended elevator bulkhead is silhouetted against the skyline. For the most part, we're, we're blending in, and we're backed up by a much larger bulkhead behind us. This is a view of the demolition plan. The existing bulkhead is shaded on the, you can, you can see it in both the roof plan and, and the elevations. It's an existing beige brick bulkhead. This is our proposed extension. We're extending up about, about 10 feet above the existing height. This is a minimum distance required to meet code for this particular type of elevator. We're working with an elevator consultant, Hubert Hayes, and we had, we had looked at other possibilities. This is a, it's a, machine room for this elevator is in the basement. We'd actually investigated a machine in roomless elevator or other configurations, and we, our conclusion has been, this is, this is the minimum code, that the minimum height we can do to reach, to achieve code and bring the rooftop access for the elevator. So what we're proposing is a beige brick extension of the existing bulkhead that will tie in with the beige brick of the existing bulkhead. We're, we're looking to do a vestibule, a lower vestibule, which would be clad with copper. This is a section through the elevator. It's a steel structure with three-way masonry to tie in with the existing bulkhead. We, this, this view is somewhat deceiving, I don't know if this pointer works. The actual roof line is, is in here, the existing, so our extension is up to here, but we are, we are bringing the, we are going to reconstruct the lower walls of the bulkhead, which is why we're showing the multi-way wall here, but the extension is really from, from this line up. These are some detail sections at the, the door and window head and, and the base, some more, some more detailed sections. I'll skip ahead to the photographs. So these are some of the photo views. This drawing on the right at the elevation shows the existing water tank bulkhead in the background. This is our proposed bulkhead here with the, with the smaller vestibule. As you can see, when we're south of the building on Central Park West, there is no visibility. We have to get pretty far back in the park by the, this is the access road from the park, I believe, I'm having trouble reading it, and, and also from the bridle path and some other points in Central Park where you can begin to see the, the bulkhead. Again, our, our proposal is to, is to do a beige, a buff color brick to, to make it blend with the background.
Is there a question? Why, why couldn't you use the lower, machine roomless, lower run elevator?
Um, our, our elevator consultant, Hubert Hayes, has, has, has investigated that. They've, this, we've, we've worked with staff on this as well, we've exchanged some, some, there's been some back and forth on that, but the, the elevator consultant has informed us this is the lowest possible configuration we can do to meet code. Obviously, we want to keep it as low as, as we can, so Landmark's staff had asked if it was...
Is the machine roomless elevator?
No, the machine room is in the basement, so the room that's above the, this is the, oh, let me go back here. This is the existing bulkhead, so this room is needed for the overhead sheave space and the area of refuge on top of the car. So this, this does not have a machine room on the, on the roof, and so it's, there's no, there's no machinery or equipment up here other than the overhead sheave space and the, and that configuration. We've been back and forth with the elevator consultant on this, and, and this, this is the code minimum we can do to, to have the roof stop here.
Do you have a, a section of this?
Um, this is a section through the vestibule... This is a section through the vestibule.
No, no, of the, right, is this the...
This is a section through the elevator shaft, and this line, I'm trying to...
I'm just trying to understand what that height is about, because part of it is for, you said is the...
Yeah, we didn't draw the overhead sheave in here. I don't know if we have any, but there's a, there's a, there's a platform here.
Yeah.
Where the service technician and the, and this is part of the reason for this.
Oh, I see, because it has, you have to allow somebody to actually enter that space?
We have to allow somebody to enter that space, and there's also a sheave beam that supports the wheels for the elevator. And it's, that is what's driving the height of this, the structure.
All right, are there, okay, you have some more views to show us?
Well, just a few more views. You know, we do, we do have some other shots that show some similar, well, I don't know if we'd call them similar, but we were asked to put together some shots showing other water tank structures, other bulkheads. But we really, we really feel that this is the other view from Central Park, Central Park West, north of it, where you can start to see it, but we, you know, our intention was to blend in with that much taller bulkhead behind us.
Okay. Any questions? All right, we have one speaker, Brianna Bricker.
Brianna Bricker from Landmark West. Dear Commissioners, while at first blush, this project may seem like a modest one, the C of A committee wants to draw the commission's attention to the mock-up photo JA-ten. This detail depicts the proposed addition on the primary facade, making it clear that the enlarged bulkhead and vestibule will have a significant impact on a prominent view of the landmark. The proposed modification is a substantial intervention, and it is visible from the bridle path. Our C of A committee found that it does detract from the scale and massing of our landmark. The most deleterious aspects of the project include the interruption of the inherent symmetry of the facade, the disruption of the original volume of the building, and its impact on the highly recognizable and iconic skyline. As a result, the C of A committee finds the proposal inappropriate and recommends denial of this application. Our committee feels that this project is a worthy moment to note the fallacy of continual atomization of projects. This extension vestibule appears to exist in the context of a larger scheme handled at staff level. While it is, while in that context, it may seem minor, the public is reading this building not as a bulkhead extension, but as an intrusion in the urban fabric, in its context of the building, this block, the Central Park skyline, and its greater historic district. It is perspective clearly visible from the Central Park scenic landmark, but one that is lost when one only focuses on the quantity of brick corseings justified by code amid a complete rooftop overhaul. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on the site? No speakers. Community Board Seven recommends approval of the elevator bulkhead. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Any other questions? Okay, we can close the hearing. All right, comments? Are there any concerns about this? I think that, you know, it is visible, but it's with already existing accretions at the rooftop, and, you know, the views are, I mean, mostly from the park, but I think it's still, I don't think it ultimately detracts from either the context of the historic district or the building. Okay.
In the matter of docket number nineteen dash three-three-zero-two, two seventy-five Central Park West in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, application is to enlarge a rooftop bulkhead. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. I recommend approval, noting that the proposed work will not eliminate or cause damage to any significant architectural features of the building, that the elevator bulkhead, while visible from Central Park West, West Eighty-seventh Street, and locations within Central Park, will be seen against a backdrop of other visible rooftop bulkheads, mechanical equipment, and water towers, and will be clad in light-colored brick to blend in with the existing rooftop bulkheads on this building, that the elevator vestibule, featuring copper cladding, will be lower in height so that it will only be minimally visible from Central Park West and seen within the context of copper-clad features at adjacent buildings, and that the proposed work will not diminish the special historic and architectural character of the building or the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
The next item on the agenda is item eleven. It's an application for certificate of appropriateness, the Borough of Manhattan, docket number nineteen-six-two-five-seven. This is eighty Riverside Drive, located within the Riverside Drive, West Eightieth, Eighty-first Street Historic District. It's a neoclassical-style apartment building designed by Maurice Deutsch and built in nineteen-twenty-six, twenty-seven, and the application is to install rooftop mechanical equipment and screening.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Emma Waterloo, Preservation Staff. The item before you is for eighty Riverside Drive in the Riverside Drive, West Eightieth through Eighty-first Street Historic District. The building is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Riverside Drive and West Eightieth Street. The proposal is to install rooftop HVAC equipment and screening, which will be visible from public thoroughfares, and the applicant will walk you through those views. There is also a restorative component in conjunction with this application that is being reviewed at staff level. The applicant is here to further explain the proposal and answer your questions. Thank you.
Hello, I'm James Shannon from Climate Architects. All right, so this is eighty Riverside Drive, and as Emma said, we are proposing to install rooftop compressors on the high roof for a full building cooling system. Currently, the building is cooled with AC units on every window. They are here in black. That's the best way we could graphically describe them. And we will be removing every single AC unit with this installation. The installation will be screened, as you can see in these drawings, which is required by zoning, and we're also providing to restore some of the old historical features of the building as well, including the original door that was proposed for the building by Maurice Deutsch and historic urns. And then here's our block front elevations, showing the context. It's the existing high roof conditions. This is existing conditions and proposed conditions. This is kind of a typical floor plan layout of the hotel building. Here's where all the AC units are for each individual room, and no more AC units, and we're going to actually have a ductless split system, so these are the air handlers inside each room. And here's existing and proposed sections. And these are the actual sizes of the compressors that will be needed. We're going to need six of them up there. Each compressor is going to service roughly three floors. And so we did explore every option for the location of these compressors. So this is the rear yard of the building. To put them down here would be mechanically not feasible because there's not enough air circulation down there to actually have these compressors work properly. We did look at installing them on every third floor, basically with maintenance platforms hanging off the side of the building, and in our opinion, we thought that would be much more intrusive than putting them on the high roof and screening them from public view. So we did do a mock-up. Here's the before images, and here are after images with the mock-up installed. So it is visible, as Emma said, but it's not terrible. Again, here are before photos, after photos with the mock-up. And then these are renderings. So we're choosing a black screening material to match the black existing tar of the bulkhead. This is the elevator machine room bulkhead, and below that is the penthouse bulkhead, and then you can see the water tower there. So in our opinion, we think the additional bulk shown by the screening blends in well with the original historic features of the building. Again, before, after, proposed rendering. Another rendering. Just additional details of actually how the screening system would work, so you wouldn't see the units at all. All you could see, and this is zoomed in, but it's an extension of the bulkhead, about seven feet higher. And back to, you know, what we're looking into as well is restoring the historical doors of the building. This is what's currently there, these glass storefront doors. This is what was drawn on the original Maurice Deutsch drawings that we have, and this is our proposed design, matching this design as close as possible. And then these are the historic urns that used to be on the building that at some point were removed. And again, another reason we'd like to do this is a safety factor. We've got, you know, seventeen-story high-rise building here where we have maintenance people putting in and out removable AC units every year. It's possible one drops, falls. It's not the best for public safety as well. That's another reason the owner really wants to make this happen.
Do you have to... Do you have to screen it?
Do we have to screen it? As far as we understand, yes.
For noise code or something?
For zoning.
For zoning? There is? Is that new? But you're required to screen it? Okay, just wondering. All right, any other questions? We have one speaker, Brianna Bricker.
Brianna Bricker from Landmark West. Dear Commissioners, the Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee appreciates the efforts made by the applicant to restore aspects of the landmark building, namely replicate and return the parapet urns and replace the entrance door with a design more in keeping with the architect's original intent. Our committee's concern lines with the additional rooftop equipment. Eighty Riverside Drive is already the tallest structure on the block, containing more than three times the number of occupiable floors as its neighbors, and topping out at over three times the height. Consolidating and condensing equipment while lowering donage could alleviate some of this impact, which further skews one's view from the scenic landmark of Riverside Drive, Riverside Park. Our committee recommends denial of this application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on the site? Community Board Seven recommends approval of this application. Do we have any more questions for the applicant? Okay, in that case, we'll close the hearing. Comments? Any concerns about this addition? I think the good thing is that they start removing the AC units from all the windows, and I think that will actually make the facade much more robust. Okay, good. Adi?
Yes. In the matter of docket one-nine-six-two-five-seven, eighty Riverside Drive, Riverside Drive, West Eightieth, Eighty-first Street Historic District, sorry, a neoclassical-style apartment building designed by Maurice Deutsch and built in nineteen-twenty-six, twenty-seven, the application is to install rooftop mechanical equipment and screening. I note that the style, scale, materials, and details of the building are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the historic district, and I recommend approval, finding that the work will not alter or destroy any significant architectural features of the building, that the proposed work will help the building's facades to more closely recall the historic condition by eliminating the need for through-the-window air conditioners, that the mechanical units will be the smallest equipment available to adequately serve the building, and will be set back from the primary facades and mounted as low as possible on the penthouse roof, and that the proposed installation will have a simple silhouette and black finish, which will blend with the finish of the penthouse facades, and will be seen within the context of other rooftop accretions, thereby helping this installation to not call undue attention to itself when viewed from public thoroughfares.
All in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Commissioners, item twelve is an application for certificate of appropriateness, the Borough of Manhattan, docket number nineteen-six-six-four-four. This is ninety-one Central Park West, located within the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. This is a neo-Renaissance-style apartment building designed by Schwartz &amp; Gross and built in nineteen-twenty-eight, twenty-nine. The application is to alter windows.
Good afternoon, Victor Tumman, Preservation Staff. Ninety-one Central Park West was built in nineteen-twenty-eight, nineteen-twenty-nine. Either while the building was under construction or shortly before, William Randolph Hearst purchased the sixteenth-floor penthouse. You can see just a sliver of it from this photo here. Instead of installing the typical windows that were being proposed at the rest of the building, he had stained glass installed at the sixteenth floor. Sometime prior to designation, the penthouse was subdivided, so I'm not sure if there was stained glass prior to, if there was stained glass for the entire penthouse, or if it was just the front side, but right now, here's some more context photos. Right now, the stained glass that exists at the sixteenth floor is shown in the orange or red. This is a kind of non-visible courtyard facade, then the rest of the penthouse completes the U shape here. This penthouse also includes the existing water tower, and there is stained glass at two of the facades. This is the seventeenth-floor plan showing that. There's, at nineteen, there is existing stained glass, and at twenty, there is stained glass, and then there's some light-colored panels in twenty-two. Here's an elevation showing what the assemblies are, are light-colored glass, and then decorative panels, the upper portions. You can see this in the photos in a second. This is the typical installation from the exterior. There's some without any decorative panels. And this, these are what the panels look like now. So I won't go into too much detail, but what the applicant is proposing to do is to remove all of the light-colored panels, install new windows, recreating the configuration, then reinstall the hand-painted panels. At the upper floor, they're proposing to alter the assemblies to make them operable doors. And at the south side, which is not visible, proposing a new stained glass assembly. I'll hand it over to the architect.
Hello, everybody. My name is Mark Newman from Shelter Mendel. I'm here with Bea Lee, also from Shelter Mendel. Victor gave a pretty good summary of what we're proposing here. Again, sixteenth floor, those are all the existing stained glass windows that are under special consideration, and then on seventeen, currently, there are... These two are the ones that exist as stained glass now. We're proposing to lower those sills, lower the sills only of this one and this window here to allow access to the roof terrace on the north side and the roof terrace on the south side. Window nineteen will remain exactly as is, that's the one facing the park. So I think the clearest version of how this will play out happens in the up-close renderings of the proposed and existing. So again, here, on the left, you have the existing configuration of this double door. On the right, you have the proposed. That's this window and door right here with the transom. This one...
Before you moved to that, but in the previous, yes, so you're increasing the size of the opening over here, is that for, is because it's now going to function as a door?
This already does function as a door.
Okay, but so the increased height is just aesthetic, or...
So it's actually the same head height, but we're just removing the upper layer, which actually, according to our stained glass expert, came later. It was a replacement. You can see how the, you see how the lower level actually has more of the original detail? This came after. So we're going to take the original condition and move it up and just make the door, the door leaf itself taller.
Okay, understood.
But I'm just starting on sixteen, I'll work my way up to seventeen. This window is of particular interest, it has a lot of detail in it. We've retained all of that detail. The issue with, you know, after the buyer purchased this, is that, as you can see, facing east towards the park, there's little to no view in this condition because of the color panes. So we're proposing to keep the texture of the lead intact, but to just replace the inner panes with clear glass. Slightly better view. Which is actually quite nice because, you know, part of the experience of being in that space is, are the windows. And so we love them, he loves them, fortunately, so we're interested in keeping it that way, aside from these sort of broken pieces and irregular colors. So that window takes place here. That's, the view in the lower right-hand corner keys you into where all these take place. place. Again, similar right around the corner, we'll keep the medallions intact, keep the lead intact, uh, all the cross bracing that actually supports the lead will stay intact. Inside and out, we're gonna, we're going to stick with single-pane glass, um, so that we can actually feel the fabric of the city both on the exterior and the interior. Working our way around the corner into the living room space, same, uh, same approach. This was the side light to this main door, currently a door, will stay a door. Corresponding side light. Also in the living room, facing south. Living room facing south, double-hung windows that will remain double-hung windows. This on the courtyard side, uh, as Victor was alluding to earlier, so this, this is our unit now, but the, the original penthouse continued around to the west. There's now a demising wall here, so this faces the courtyard, this window. Existing and proposed. This one is probably the key feature of the entire unit. It faces right onto the park. We're going to replace it entirely in kind, we're not, we're just gonna clean it, um, shore up the existing jams and replace the window, no change. This one, facing north, is what we're, where we're proposing to lower the sill. So we're going to keep everything that was there intact, but then lower it, the, the current sill height is about forty-three inches, we're gonna lower the sill so you can actually walk out, have access to the roof, and we'll infill with the stained glass expert to make up for the artwork that's not there. Then we got to thinking that the north side, we go way back to the plan. Here, so the, the north side and the east side have stained glass, but the south side currently has no stained glass. So, we thought the symmetry of that and the balance of that was a little bit off, and we actually are going to add stained glass, um, potentially to the, uh, south side as well, so that when you're in that seventeenth-floor space, there's a rhythm to the experience. So as William Randolph Hearst worked his narrative through some of these stained glass stories, we're thinking that maybe it would be interesting to pull the, the new owner's narrative in, into this as well. So we're, we're showing that here, um, but we don't have, let's see if I can get to it. Here, so this is the current exterior condition, and we, we did a quick rendering of what it might look like from the, uh, outside, but we, we haven't committed to this artwork yet, we're still working on the stained glass portion. But again, the sill will be lowered, so you have access to that roof. These are some various views from the neighborhood and from the meadow, showing that it's basically, uh, you know, barely visible except for way over on the east side of Sheep's Meadow down Sightline views from the street, none of, none of sixteen is, is visible.
Are there any questions? Any questions? All right, we have one speaker, yes?
Sorry, I, I know you haven't committed to the stained glass, but you showed it just as repeating the-
On the, on the south side.
Where you're extending it to be a full panel.
Right.
So you're, is that the intention, to just repeat the pattern?
We're probably gonna, oh. You're talking about...
The, that.
Here, right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we, we actually, I don't think it would make sense to just repeat the same character, we'll add another character in there, um, so that it doesn't look the same, no.
Do you know what this one is modeled after?
This one, we don't know, yeah, I mean, we've, we've met, we've met with two experts and-
They don't know what period exactly, or what?
No, no, they think it's original to the building, um, but it's-
Right, but it's modeled after some, something somewhere-
There's all sorts of stories, there's, there's Germanic tales, there's, um, all sorts of, it runs the gamut. There's Latin, there's German, there's, it's, it's, you know, the only thing that we suspect might have happened is that there's some indication that there's some imagery from Hearst's past that are in the faces of some of the characters, but what they're actually doing is, there's no, there's no consistent thread.
Any other questions? All right, we have one speaker, Brianna Bricker.
Brianna Bricker from Landmark West. Dear Commissioners, the Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee can understand an applicant's interest in maximizing their central part views, but the reality is that these stylized, very specific original windows were a known presence at the time of acquisition and are undeniably defining features of these most ornate levels of this landmark. Any purchaser of such a home would perform due diligence and realize that this glass is original. If one were to cut down detail in window types with each change of shares, buildings throughout the district would be stripped naked. Is the lowest common denominator that our neo-Renaissance-style landmarks become pared down to modern style via reduction? In a closed system, the second law is a universal trend towards entropy, if allowed. There is also the potential that the next occupant could be just like the ones who coexisted with these windows for the past eighty-nine years and loved them, or perhaps not want the apartment because the original glass has been lost. We would be poor stewards to condone this type of action. Landmark West feels the detailing represented in converting the tower window to a door is appropriate in function and scale, but its crazy quilt glazing patchwork misrepresents the original intent of these leaded vignettes and would be better as an in-kind expansion of the existing moire pattern. Thank you.
Are there any more speakers on the side? All right, Community Board Seven recommends disapproval of the elimination of the leaded glass and reorganization, reorganization of some of the stained glass in the proposed replacement windows and doors. On the sixteenth, seventeenth floor. Okay, uh, do we have any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we can close the hearing. All right, uh, comments? Well, I think the, yeah, I, I think, you know, they've sort of taken an interesting approach, I think, to the windows, and if, there, there are a couple of things that they're doing here. So for most part, it seems the real change is, and I'm not going to speak to the, how one removes, dismantles, and puts it back together, or what the method is, but it's really the colored glass is being replaced by more transparent glass, I think, in most the windows. And then you have those two situations where they're extending, um, either the, the opening and removing the glass, which was the second-tier piece, I think that was the first thing, and then the second one, it was, uh, making it, uh, I guess, at, um, extending it so that it could become a door. And then there's the introduction of stained glass and a door, so removing the historic material and bringing it down, uh, to, to grade at the seventeenth floor. Um, I don't know, I think it's all within the spirit of, of respecting the stained glass. So, and you know, it has a limited visibility, it's interesting because it's, it may be original to the building, but it seemed like it was related really to the tenant versus sort of the architecture of the building. And, uh, it's kind of a discovery for us because I guess, one doesn't know about it until one actually goes there, something comes before us. So I, I really think it's a very respectful way of allowing the use, um, and modern needs of light, but still really, um, taking care of these windows. Yes?
I, I, I think I mostly agree. I, I think that, um, first of all, the applicant's to be, to be praised, I think nine, nine applicants out of ten would have wanted to blow them out altogether and have that untrammelled view of the park for which they are paying, I'm sure, not a small amount of money. Um, so I think it's great that they're trying to hold on to that. I think, when I think back on other examples of feature windows like this that are anomalous to the building, kind of quirky, weird, one-offs, um, we have given some flexibility to their relocation, removal, modification. I certainly think this is relatively modest. The only thing I would suggest is that maybe as a recollection of the original, they could retain a couple, a few of the colored lights per window, just to kind of, so that there's a memory of it, but I, I wouldn't object if they, if, if that was not a view that was shared by others, but, um, I think that it's, generally speaking, quite, quite okay.
All right, I, any other comments? Yes, Diana?
Yeah, I, uh, I think this is a very reasonable proposal. Um, you know, it's, it's very charming that this element was, and has such antiquity with a building, but at the same time, it was a very personal choice on the part of an individual tenant. It's not something the architect had intended as part of the architecture. It has become part of the historical fabric to a degree, and, and I think that it's very nice that the, uh, current tenant is, is trying to respect that. But I, I think that it's, uh, I do put it in a somewhat different category in terms of being able to change it, that it, uh, was not something intended originally to be part of the original design, so, uh, I think that the efforts that are being made to keep most of it are commendable, but, um, I think I'm okay with the proposal.
Um, any other comments? All right, um, is it, Adi, is it you? Uh, you have to read it?
No, I think it's-
Is it Diana? Okay, Diana.
Was it me?
Kim, Kim or Diana? Uh, I-
I think it was.
Okay.
Sure.
Diana.
Okay. So, I may like it the right one here. I've got this one in front of me, that's what's drawing me up. Okay, sorry. In the matter of ninety-one Central Park West, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, application is to alter windows. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the stained glass windows at the sixteenth and seventeenth floors, which are to be retained in part and otherwise modified or removed, were commissioned for this private residence and are not part of the original design of the building, that the proposed work at the setback sixteenth and seventeenth floors is largely imperceptible from public thoroughfares and seen in context with non-decorative window assemblies at the primary facade. That the proposed work at the sixteenth and seventeenth floor will entail the careful removal of hand-painted stained glass panels from partially visible door and window assemblies, and their subsequent installation within new window and door assemblies in the same general position, preserving these relics of the historic installation. That although light-colored stained glass will be removed from the window and door assemblies at the sixteenth floor, the decorative configurations and details will be recreated in the new assemblies, thereby recalling the historic installation. That the monumental hand-painted stained glass assemblies at the seventeenth floor will be retained in their entirety and installed into new door assemblies, and that a new monumental hand-painted, uh, stained glass assembly will replace the existing, a non-visible plain assembly in a similar opening. And the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District.
All in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Commissioners, the next item is item thirteen on the agenda, it's an application for a certificate of appropriateness, docket number nineteen six-three-nine-nine. This is two-twenty-five West End Avenue, located within the West End Collegiate Historic District Extension. This is a Romanesque, Romanesque Revival-style apartment building designed by William H. Birkmeyer and built in nineteen oh-three, and the application is to alter the areaway and install a barrier-free access lift, signage, and lighting.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, James Rusiello, Reservation Staff. The item before you is two-twenty-five West End Avenue and the West End Collegiate Historic District Extension. The building is located at the northwest corner at the West End Avenue and West Seventieth Street. The proposal is to alter the areaway and install a barrier-free access lift, signage, and lighting at the West Seventieth Street facade. The architect, uh, is here to explain the proposal and to answer your questions. Thank you.
Um, I'm Corey Majarik. I'm just gonna give you some overview, overall photograph. This is the south facade along West Seventieth Street. The area that we're going to be talking about is this, is the gated courtyard there. This is, to your right is a view towards the west, and on your left is a view towards the east. This is standing at the corner, um, of West End Avenue and Seventieth Street looking west towards the areaway. Um, you can see the, the large bullnose that wraps along the base of the building. This is the areaway. The gate that you see, we believe, is original. This is the tax photo. I'm gonna be coming back to this slide. These are the existing conditions drawings. Uh, there is storefront at the south wall. There are some existing gas piping and equipment, um, meters and so forth, in a fenced enclosure. Those aren't going away, regrettably, we're stuck with those. Um, there's some mismatched patches of brick, which we hope to find a better match for and clean up. The existing handrail at either side of the stair leading down into the areaway is existing, we're gonna, we're not looking to change that, nor are we, uh, changing the existing stair. The existing stair is a mason's stair with stone, uh, either limestone or cast stone treads, that's staying. To your left is the gas equipment, like I said, unfortunately, we can't get rid of that. This is the storefront, we're going to be replacing and upgrading. All that wire and conduit, um, we want to put behind a, um, more period-appropriate metal wire management, um, piece of trim right directly above the, the doors there. And, I mentioned the mismatched bridge, we're gonna swap that out. Um, these doors, these are just doors to mechanical spaces. Um, we're gonna replace these with, for recessed panel, hollow, still hollow metal doors, hollow metal frames, just gonna clean those up. This metal cover is going away, and we're gonna replace all that brick. These are the existing, I'm sorry, these are the proposed drawings. Um, the biggest, the biggest thing, I guess, here is the handicap chair, the top right-hand corner. You see, we nested it right next to the existing staircase with access from the sidewalk. And, we're, we're looking to make some modifications and enhancements to that existing gate leading down into the areaway. We're gonna keep the, what is right now, uh, a fixed leaf of that gate and turn that into the gate for the chairlift. So we'll utilize the raw iron, um, section that's there, hinge it in such a way. We have to put a filler panel on the backside, which we'll do in a discreet way with glass and, and metal. And the other big, the other big gesture here is, is the, the, um, open frame light here at either side of the, of the entrance to the areaway. We have signage, we have a placeholder for signage. The space that this leads to is considered a community facility, so, the building is permitted to put doctor's office or some other type of community facility, probably gonna be a doctor's office. We don't know what the sign is going to look like. We will cooperate with Landmarks with respect to the design and color and make of the sign, but that's really just a placeholder for now. Um, it's kind of a- It's kind of a hand rendering of it. See, we've taken what is now a fixed end of the gate and turned it into a swing gate to access the chairlift. We're keeping the gate in, right? Yes.
The stairs.
Gate stays, but we're sort of accentuating the entrance with those open frame light piers. I'm going to go back to the tax photo for just a moment, and you can see in front of that panel truck, it appears that those open frame gate piers existed at one point. We're taking it one more step by adding a globe-type lighting, a light fixture on the top of each of them. We're also proposing to put those globe-type light fixtures at either side of the sign area above the storefront. These are fixtures, we were thinking of using, they're made by Sternberg. These are the wall fixtures. This is the fixture being used at the top of the light pier. Just, this is an example of one of those open frame gate piers. This is actually a City Hall park. This is a building in the same historic district with those wall-mounted globe-type light fixtures. Now, we are proposing to put the mast for the chairlift against the stair, not against the building. The storefront, this is, this is an example of what we're looking to do with storefronts. Would be a blank panel at the, at the bottom. Just gives a little more interest. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any questions? All right, we have two speakers. Brianna Bricker?
Brianna Bricker with Landmark West. Dear Commissioners, the Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee supports efforts to increase access to all buildings and facilities for all New Yorkers, including those who are mobility-challenged. It is important that applicants take steps to increase accessibility while at the same time making those modifications in a manner that is appropriate to the landmark status and character of the specific structures involved. It is within this context that the C of A Committee raises the following issues. One, to be truly period-appropriate, the globe lamps should be milk glass, not acrylic. Two, as currently proposed, the union of the street-level fence-turned-gate and its metal mesh panel adjoining it to the lift seem technically implausible. The applicant has failed to provide a detailed drawing or schematic vignette of any of the presentation sketches or renderings to exemplify how these elements will join. Further, there is no drawing or sketch showing how the modified fence will interact with the lift gate in plan. Applicants should not be permitted to obtain permission to modify landmark-protected buildings with less than complete disclosure of their plans and clear and complete disclosure of the materials they intend to use. We recommend the Commission request applicants apply details clarifying gate assembly before taking a vote. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Corey Magarotis. Magarotis, oh, you spoke already? Oh, okay. You signed in, so you don't need to speak. All right, any other speakers on this item? Community Board Seven recommends, let's see, approval for the alterations to the areaway installation and the new chairlift, new signage and lighting, and urges the applicant to consider an alternative material to stainless steel for the proposed lattice such as cedar. Can you just explain what, where the lattice is? It's, is that the grid that you've shown?
Yeah.
What is, it's for, it's for like?
It's a place.
The plant wall or?
For climbing vines to grow. It separates it from the brick about approximately four inches. The community board was amenable to putting some type of trellis. When they asked me what material we were thinking of using, I said stainless steel just simply because of its non-corrosive properties. But we, we would be amenable to using, to the use of powder-coated metal, wood. We're not married to any particular material.
Okay, and the way you've shown it in this rendering, this will also be in front of the louvers, is that correct?
No.
The louvers are required, you have mechanical equipment behind it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? We can close the hearing. All right, are there?
Can I just mention one thing?
Yes, go ahead.
As to the implausibility of converting that fixed section of gate into a swing gate, we actually met with the vendor of those chairlifts, and he's, he didn't see any great difficulty in doing that. Now, you know, it's reasonable for you to expect some sort of clarification as to how we plan to fill that space from the backside of that gate for the, for the hoistway. Really, all that's intended to do is the same way in an elevator hoistway, you can't have sort of shelves or ledges for tools to, to fall and get hung up on. Truly, that's really the only purpose of that. So we would, we would do something that was in keeping with the construction of the gate, so like a metal frame with glass.
Okay. All right, comments? Are there any concerns about this proposal? Concerns? Okay, Kim?
In the matter of 235. Actually, 225. It says 30 here. 225 West End Avenue, West End Collegiate Historic Extension. Am I on the right one? Yes, it's a little, okay. Renaissance Revival Apartment Building with Stores Designed by Clinton and Russell and Built in 1900 to 1901. Applic-- guess where I was thinking? 225, thank you. In the matter of 225 West End Avenue, West End Collegiate Historic District Extension, a Renaissance Revival-style apartment building designed by William H. Berkmeier and built in 1903. Application is to alter the areaway and install a barrier-free access ramp, signage, and lighting. I note that the style, scale, materials, and details of the building are among the features which contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the West End Collegiate Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not alter, eliminate, or conceal any significant architectural features, that the minimal size and simple design of the chairlift platform panels and masts will not overwhelm or detract from the large facade, that the presence of the chairlift in the sunken setback areaway will not detract from the streetscape, that the modification of the iron railing into a swing gate assessing the chairlift and platform will not call undue attention to itself and will help minimize the presence of the chairlift on the streetscape, that the design proposed for the open entrance piers in documented, is documented in historic photo, that the design proposed for the ball finial light fixtures at the entrance piers will be harmonious with the other lighting fixtures at the facades at the building, that the simple design of the shop front and entrance infill surrounded by the continuation of the prominent decorative bullnose limestone silk horse will help maintain the primacy of the historic masonry surrounds, and that the proposed work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the building or the West End Collegiate Historic District.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application's approved.
Commissioner, item 14 is an application for certificate of appropriateness, the Borough of Manhattan, docket number 196824. This is 235 West 75th Street, located within the West End Collegiate Historic District Extension. This is a Renaissance Revival-style apartment building with stores designed by Clinton and Russell and built in 1900 to 1901, and the application is to construct a barrier-free access ramp.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Aunt Jennings, Preservation Staff. This application is for 235 West 75th Street, located on the north side of the street between Broadway and West End Avenue in the West End Collegiate Historic District Extension. Proposal is to construct a barrier-free access ramp at the western side of West 75th Street. You can see it in this green area here. Here we have a tax photo of the building. This area over here is where the work is proposed, so we don't really have a great photo of it. Here's the building. This photo is from 2013, pre-2013, before designation. These are included because right now the sidewalk, sidewalk bridge is up, so you can't really have a good views of the building, so that's why these are included. This is the area that's proposed. It looks a little bit different now, where the ramp's going to go, I'll show you that. So here again is the area of work, and here we have the existing condition, and here is a rendering with the ramp. It's not including the railings, we'll see that in the next shot. Basically, they're going to remove this little bit of curb, stone curving here. There's a stone wall here that's going to be removed, then they'll install stone that matches that landing and construct some railings. So you can see it here in this axon. They remove that portion here and here, as well as this little bit of decorative railing, install the stone ramp, the metal railings, and they leave this one metal post. Then, then in the plan, same thing, you can see the ramp. Here are some more close-ups of the location. And then the elevation, you can see they're retaining this portion of that railing on the historic pier, and then the stone ramp comes up to meet it, and then some sections. So here's the existing condition. Questions?
Any questions? Okay, we have one speaker, Brianna Bricker.
Brianna Bricker for Landmark West. Dear Commissioners, the Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee supports enhanced accessibility initiatives and finds this proposal to be a comfortable marriage of location, run, and materials. We would prefer that some of the interest from the removed decorative ironwork could inspire detailing of any kind in the stanchions of the new utilitarian ramp railing, which would, which appears to be a missed opportunity at this becoming entrance. Thank you for your time.
Any other speakers? Community Board Seven recommends approval. Are there any other questions? Okay, we can close the hearing. Comments? You know, one of the things I think that the staff has been working on, and it's something that should continue to be explored, is about some of these very discreet changes that are being done for barrier-free access. And there's, there's always sort of a, an exploration to begin with, with staff about what is, are there more appropriate places where it can happen, where it's less obtrusive? But finally, I think they come to us because staff doesn't have an ability to, to approve them. We've seen about two or three of them today, maybe not the one in Soho, but the other one, which was for, it wasn't a ramp, but it was for the lift, which was again within an areaway. And some of these, I think, are, you know, they're very discreet. You know, staff works with them to find the right location, they look at how it can be integrated into, through color and material to really not have an effect on, on the building itself. So, you know, I think we, we should all sort of think about that, whether that's a good thing for us to defer to staff, to our rules. Just wanted to raise that.
It's an interesting question. I think it'd be hard to quantify rules about it, but I think that it, it's the kind of thing that I'm sure the staff knows very well, that it's a slam dunker, it's difficult. And if we were able to give them some kind of flexibility to send something up when it needs to be, but to approve it when it doesn't, I mean, I think, you know, this one's pretty, to me anyway, cut and dried.
This one, and I think the other area.
I think the last one also is pretty, pretty straightforward. You know, I, I think, yeah, you know, if we can figure out a way to write a rule that allows it to go through without, without taking from the staff their ability to exercise discretion, I think it's fine.
Do you think it's worthwhile to try to keep the rail that's being replaced and replicated along the, the ramp? Or is it want-to-read as a, as a completely new feature?
I think, you mean, in this particular case?
Yes, this one.
Right. You know, the reason why they've gone for a very simple railing is because I think in general, when we have the rams, we try and find something that railings are very, very discreet and you can, you know, they don't form any visual obstruction. I think that if we think about trying to put a railing which is more historic, right, it's, I think it'll have, it's just introducing another element there that is stronger. I don't know, I don't know how the commission, I, I'm okay with the railing as is, but so.
I, I understand the point, and if it was a simpler design, I might, I might agree, but I think it's, it's such an elaborate design, it might be overkill. I mean, it's, it's only in discreet places, and if you were to put in another 25, 30 feet of it, it'd just be a bit much, I think.
Right.
It's a little too elaborate.
It's like they couldn't have come forward with that, but they did. And we often see, it's, it's like, should you replicate or should you differentiate?
That's what I'm asking.
They're choosing to differentiate, and there certainly plenty of policy and precedent here to say, that's a good approach.
Right, but just going back to, I think, what John was saying, just his own comment about this, that sometimes, leaving aside who brings it forward to us, whether they propose it or we feel that they should do it, I think that, you know, in this particular case, because the railing itself seems very discreet in the building, I think that's what he was saying, that now it'll occupy sort of a longer length, and it's an elaborate railing. Plus, I think the other side, the railing is different, so you'd have one side railing, one type, unless you want to have both sides, and I think it's, you know, a lot of ironwork, where historically, there wasn't so much ironwork.
Plus, those are also grab bars, you know?
Yes, so they have.
And so I think they, it helps for them to be very simple.
Right, they may have a function.
Yes, you could.
You could, but. Okay, good.
In the matter of 235 West 75th Street, West End Collegiate Historic District Extension, the application is to construct a barrier-free access ramp. Noting that the building's style, scale, materials, and details of the, are, do contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the West End Collegiate Historic District Extension, I recommend approval, finding that the proposed ramp will be installed in front, at a former lightwell, which has already been altered from the historic condition, and which will provide barrier-free access to a primary entrance of a commercial establishment. That except for the removal of the limited amount of simply detailed masonry at one end of the entrance cheek walls, no significant architectural features will be altered or eliminated by the proposed work. That the removal of these historic and modern masonry units, which are not among the most prominent sections of the masonry framing at the building base, will not diminish the overall composition. That the proposed stone paving and landing will match the adjoining stair in terms of material and finish, thereby supporting a unified design. That the railings will be anchored to modern paving and simply designed with minimum number of required pickets, and will match the existing metalwork at the entrance in terms of material and finish, helping installations remain a discreet, harmonious presence. And that the work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building, streetscape, or West End Collegiate Historic District Extension.
All in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Commissioners, item 15 on the agenda is an application for certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, docket number 196451. This is 54 Franklin Street, AKA 1 Courtland Alley, located within the West End Collegiate Historic District Extension. The application is to remove concealed vault lights and to install a concrete sidewalk.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Derek Danderyn, Preservation Department Staff. This property is located in the Tribeca East Historic District on the north side of Franklin Street between Cortland Alley and Lafayette Street. The applicants are proposing to remove the deteriorated cast-iron sidewalk vault lights that was covered previous to designation with concrete and replace it with a concrete sidewalk clad with painted diamond plate. So this is the location of it within the Historic District. It's on the south, southeast corner of the district. This, these are the photos at time of designation, which show that the vault lights were previously clad, concrete, or covered with concrete. There is an existing granite sidewalk that is to be remained on site, and this is the current conditions in which they are. So as we see it, we have granite sidewalk and then the concrete paved sidewalk that's over the existing diamond plate, or diamond vault lights. And here are some more existing condition photographs. And here are the steps to the entrances to the storefront. They're diamond pane, diamond plate over vault light steps, which those are to be remained and restored, or replaced in kind. And this is the condition underneath the vault light. They're highly deteriorated. There are large sections that have fallen onto the ground of the vault. And this is their existing plan, which shows the outline of the area which they want to remove, and their proposed plan in which they're going to be retaining the historic steps or replacing them in kind, and then replacing the sidewalk and the structure itself with concrete, steel, and covered with diamond plate. And here's their section and their material sample. And this is the context of the area. Most of the sidewalks surrounding the, this area have granite sidewalks, but concrete infill where there were historic vault lights. Some are cladded with diamond plate as well. It's unknown whether or not the diamond, oh, sorry, whether or not the vault lights are currently underneath there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Derek. Are there any questions? Any questions? All right, we have one speaker, Barbara Z.
Barbara Z. of the Historic Districts Council. HDC is opposed to this application, which seeks to remove a unique historic feature in the Tribeca East Historic District. The vault lights of former manufacturing districts like Tribeca and Soho, in which you heard a similar application earlier today, are a constant source of interest for tourists and locals alike. These simple yet elegantly designed glass lenses directly connect everyone who comes in contact with them to the rich industrial history of New York City. HDC feels that restoring vault lights wherever possible is a step in the right direction and good practice for the commission. The application describes these vault lights as being, quote, "not a prominent feature on the block." Unfortunately, this is true. They are not a prominent feature because so many have been removed. Historically, however, they were a prominent feature, and HDC urges the applicant to replace them in kind. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on the side? All right, Community Board One accepts, recommends that we accept the removal of the existing vault lights, but work with the applicant to find a more fitting replacement. Do we have any other questions for the applicant?
Have they considered replacements?
Yeah, we've looked at, we've looked at, we've looked at replacements before. The client has also done an estimate for that, and it would cost them over two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to replace that, so it would be a huge financial burden for the owner.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, we can close the hearing. So I, so I think, you know, we've seen, the commission has grappled with vault lights before. There are situations where the vault lights are visible, there are situations where they're not, but they're in good condition and they want to be removed. There's others where they are deteriorating. This is a sort of an unusual case, which is that they're very deteriorated, but ever since this area's been designated, they've been covered with concrete. And I think that's a very, it's a somewhat different set of circumstances when we think about what is appropriate, because, at least in my opinion, it seems that this, they, even though it may have had it historically, they've been covered for years. And I think they're damaged and probably can continue to create damage to other parts of the building. So I think their proposal to remove it is appropriate and to, you know, they've come back and said that to recall it is through, is through putting, I guess, the, what's it called?
Diamond plate.
Exactly, the diamond plate. And we've done that.
But is it, is it true that they are, that the condition is one that's unstable or that can cause further corrosion?
I personally have been underneath the sidewalk, and if you can look in these photos, these are large sections that are completely fallen on the ground, and most of them are being currently braced with temporary structures to prevent it from actually caving in. And so the structural elements are a big cause of deterioration because of the water infiltration. And not only that, because of the weight capacity of the concrete that is on top of these deteriorated vault lights, it just causes a major problem.
Yes, Dan.
Concrete. I was thinking, this is sort of a question, comment. Well, I guess we're in comment period, right? I was just thinking about the fact that we have a couple times asked applicants to treat the steps with the vault lights, you know, because they're not in the same situation of potential deterioration. It's kind of a, at least a little recognition of the fact that vault lights were there, and whether we might be able to do that here, as opposed to the entire, you know, sidewalk vault area.
Right, and I think, but, you know, that, that example where we asked them to put the vault lights was a case where the vault lights existed, they got, I think.
It was the same as this. They covered them up with.
Yeah, they exist.
Diamond plate. They were required to put it back.
No, 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 the factors around that was that, if I remember correctly, was that while they were, they were, they've got a permit to replace it, but it, they couldn't, so they took it out, and then they put the concrete slab. It was all done illegally. This is not. This has been, this, this has just been around.
Close cover, yeah. I'm just talking about this.
So I think that was a kind of way of sort of mitigating that loss, you know?
To verify your concern, their proposal is to keep the existing vault light steps, and they are going to restore them or replace sections in kind.
Oh, I see.
Okay, that's good. So that's a part of it.
I was trying to, because it wasn't entirely clear. I thought, I thought that might be the case, and I think that's, that's at least a nice gesture to the.
I mean, and, sorry, Michael.
Oh, go ahead.
Maybe even a section in front of the stairs?
I don't know, it's been concrete for, you know?
No, I mean, replace. Too much, too fuzzy?
New or?
New. Sorry. What do you mean? Replace with new.
New vault lights?
New vault lights in, in that section directly in front of the stair, which is, whatever that dimension is, thirty by thirty.
They're saving the stairs and to put, to put new old vault lights, it's kind of.
Why do you say that?
I'm just trying to understand.
What's the gesture? If we're saving original material, vault light material, then why, what do we get from putting a new section of vault?
I guess, I, I, I think about it the way I would think about a situation where a section of masonry was removed, and they put in a patch of stucco or something, and we would allow for the replacement of that masonry if it can be determined what it was like, and, you know, that, we would consider that an improvement, even if it was not necessarily original material. And my understanding about the whole vault light saga is that the commission granted permission for modifications to vault lights, even while recognizing that they were valuable historic features, because they were, A, irreparable, and B, phenomenally expensive to fix. And even when you fixed them, the fix was itself of a limited duration because they would eventually bust and rot. Now, the last time we talked about it around this table, I believe that the, that the, my takeaway was, and I could be wrong on it, was that replacements are now viable. There are products that are reasonable and durable. And so I think that the condition that applied back in the day, when the whole notion of the diamond plate as a patch was kind of put into place as the default, may no longer be the same. It may be that things have changed. It may be that now we have the ability, and granted, it's not free, but we may have the ability that we didn't have twenty or thirty years ago. Therefore, I think that the conversation might shift, and we might look at a situation where, no one would say that vault lights are not valuable historic elements, and if they were, if they were covered over or patched, I don't see any difference between that and if it were, you know, a bluestone sidewalk that was patched, or some other feature that was removed, and if we, if we have the technology to replace it, I think, you know, cost has never officially entered into our considerations, but, you know, informally, you know, you don't want to try people crazy. So, but I think that, I think that if there is a new technological ability that wasn't here twenty years ago, that should factor into our considerations with these rather ubiquitous historic elements.
Well, I'm not sure I completely agree. I think that, you know, it's one thing if it's historic fabric that you can salvage, it's another if the historic fabric you can't salvage. And, you know, it's an interesting notion about historic fabric and historic districts, and what is sacrosanct and has to be kept at all costs. So that's one thing. I think we balance it with a level of reasonableness, so I think costs are associated with it. If this was, these were vault lights that were exposed or even semi-exposed, that were not covered with concrete, is one thing, but to me, it seems in the, in the context of appropriateness, these are buried under, you know, something that's been there for twenty-five years, and all they want to do is, it's crumbling, they want to remove it, and I don't see how we can say that's not appropriate for them to do it. And to replace it with something that recalls vault-like covers in, I mean, the diamond plate, and we've allowed that in other places as well. So I, I, I think that as a commission, we can take every aspect of buildings and material and look at them in isolation, but I think we should not stop ourselves from looking at sort of the big picture as well. Yes.
I'd sort of, in this particular, it costs a thousand bucks a square foot to make the new stuff, and it will last a long time. As far as I'm concerned with this one, the, the original vault lights have been concealed for so long that it's not an issue of, of interpretation of the sidewalk as a, as a glass vaulted sidewalk. To me, the gesture of restoring the step then evokes what this district looked like then. And to add a square of replication sidewalk vaulting, glass block sidewalk vaulting, sends a useless message, as far as I'm concerned. For me, the gesture is, is the steps, unless we want to go the whole route and say, no, you've got to, you've got to replace the whole thing with, with new.
No, we don't want to see that.
No. And so, as far as I'm concerned, the interpretive gesture of saving the steps is, is what's important, not adding another element that's actually a Disneyland element at this point, because it would be new, completely new. I don't know.
Yeah, Dan.
Yeah, I, I agree in this particular case for the reasons generally stated. But I would, I think it would be nice if we could get a presentation on the current, you know, status of vault lights, because this discussion will continue to happen, and there will be other circumstances in which we might want to say, you really should replace them, and to just know about the durability and the technology and the ability to really replace them. I would like to know a little more, so if we could do that at some point, I'd appreciate it.
I'm sure staff could look at it. As you know, once we had a presentation on insulation, I think they'll look at that as well. Okay. Other concerns?
The only other thing I would say, though, to Michael Devonshire, is that I agree with you that there is, given the fact that the steps are historic and authentic, and we have those, perhaps that's enough, but I think that the new vault lights do have a purpose sort of beyond the form, which is to say that there was a certain use here that was underground and lit, and that that's, that's a piece that you don't get in the diamond plate, and you don't even get if they were to replace the, you know, the granite, so.
Are you the steps saying?
Yeah, maybe it does, maybe it does. But in the future, sort of in other contexts, where there isn't a step, and there might be the possibility of replace, of, even if it's been covered over, of bringing back to light with that, you know, the fact that that's, that that's how these buildings were used, and that they, that's important, I think.
And you know, what I would, what I would love is if, if the city had a fund so that somebody coming here and is told by a contractor that it's going to cost them two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to replace glass block vault lights, they could come to the city and get a loan, some, some sort of a grant.
So many levels, yeah.
And, man, I mean, otherwise, these things have been covered for, for twenty-five or thirty years. How do you, how do you create the incentive for people to redo this?
Well, I mean.
It's very difficult.
These buildings are worth one thousand.
That's right.
They were worth twenty years ago.
A and.
We don't know what to pay for the building.
Yeah, well, we know what he could sell it for.
Well, sure. The person got to move.
All right, so these situations are, you know, they're complicated, that they're, we often don't, you know, we can't compel owners to rectify grandfathered conditions. They come to us when they have a scope of work before them. This is, has some implications to keep these, because there's, there, there's water infiltrations that's affecting the building, so they have to do something about it. And I think, you're absolutely right. I think that it would be great if the city had programs that allow for financial incentives for more restorative work, but they really aren't those programs. And the programs that we have are, are small, and they're very much based on income levels, and so it's, projects like these are, don't really fall within that. It's one of these ongoing issues, but we can, you know, it's true that sometimes, you know, technology changes, and when these things get perfected, then costs sometimes reduce, but we can try and find out more about just, just the production of vault lights currently and their ability to withstand all these kind of issues that have made them vulnerable in the past, yeah.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, but not for nothing, the chicken and egg does apply here. Institutions like this one has been, have been instrumental in reducing the cost of historic systems and materials across the board, certainly in New York City. And one, you know, while I don't think of that anytime soon.
I'm sorry, what?
In other words, metal cornices, right? Metal cornices is an industry that was, correct me if I'm wrong, more or less dead thirty, forty years ago, you know, or moribund.
There were, there were companies who were still producing the stuff. It was not a demand.
Now there's a demand, and it's not so crazy expensive as it used to be. Terracotta, completely, almost, almost completely driven by historic preservation as a movement in the Renaissance of that material. And I'm sure there are other examples that Michael would probably know better than me, but, you know, we put in place the diamond plate thing as a patch. Then, the, I think that as a commission, maybe this isn't the right case, but I think that, that we shouldn't think that. that, that we shouldn't think that the patch is all we can do to cut a compromise between the recollection of an important historical texture and nothing, you know? I think that, I, I, I think that, you know, if it's a thousand a foot now, my guess is that if, if it were, if it were to increase in demand because of, of either a regula-, a regulation-driven demand or other demands, that, that the price would come down, because there's nothing intrinsically expensive about the things that make this, other than the fact that there's just one guy who does it, and he doesn't sell a lot of them. So, I think that, I think that we, we as a commission should, you know, like we always do, you know, step back and think about it, because I don't think anyone would say that, that vault lights are not a treasured aspect of the texture of New York City, apart from the actual historic fabric of them, just like brick and stone and bluestone sidewalks and granite sidewalks, even if they're new, are still considered contributing aspects of the environment of certain districts, cobblestone streets, things like this. I think it really is, you know, we don't, we don't look down on, on the Meatpacking District for having disnified streets when we ask them to be, you know, when their modifications are cobblestone and, and, you know, other things like that.
You know, if I just wanted to just put one thing for the, just the discussion as we think about this, is the other, the commission's views on this, I think, were not solely a patch. It was also a recognition, and I think it's consistent across our regulation of sidewalks, that sidewalks, unlike cast iron on a building, unlike brick on a building, or terracotta on a building, these are things that are weirdly quasi-public, that the private owner is responsible for, and that are subject to lots of things out of the control of private owners, a truck that backs up on it, all sorts of things, and, and are incredibly expensive to deal with. So that consistently, we have said that when these historic things, you know, bluestone or granite, you can, if it's broken, you don't have to necessarily replace it. So we, so I do think that, that yes, it's not, it's not just this sort of decision that because it's expensive, but it's also a recognition that there is this sort of weirdly quasi-public part of it that you're requiring owner, private owners to be responsible for, that's a little outside of their control. So just, but that's probably enough.
Okay. All right, can we go ahead with decision? Michael? It's approve as is.
In the matter of 54 Franklin Street, also known as One Cartland Alley in the Tribeca East Historic District, an application to remove concealed vault lights and install a concrete sidewalk. I recommend approval, finding that the rebuilding of the vaults will support the long-term preservation of the building by reducing damage to the structure caused by water infiltration and salt. That the removal of the remaining cast iron and vault light panels is warranted by their deteriorated and unsound condition. That the removal of the remaining historic vault light panels will not result in a perceptible change in street scape, as the vault light panels were concealed from view at the time of designation of the historic district. That the installation of steel diamond plate over the proposed concrete sidewalk will recall the presence of historic cast iron vault covers, and is a common sidewalk treatment throughout the historic district. That the restoration of some of the remaining cast iron vault light steps in replacement and kind of deteriorated cast iron vault light steps will help retain, return this portion of the building closer to its historic condition. And the work will maintain a uniform sidewalk treatment and will enhance the special architectural and historic character of the building and landscape.
All in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Okay, Commissioners, item 16 on the agenda is an application for a certificate of appropriateness of the Borough of Manhattan, docket number 198141. This is 41 Park Row, AKA 39-43 Park Row, and 147 through 151 Nassau Street, the former New York Times building and individual landmark. This is a Richardsonian-Romanesque-style office building designed by George B. Post and built in 1888 to 89, and later enlarged by Robert Manneke in 1903 to 05. The application is to install storefronts, entrances, and signage.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Leanne Pollock, Preservation Staff. This item is 41 Park Row. It's located across Park Row from City Hall. You can see the building is right here, Park Row. It also has furnages on Spruce Street and Nassau Street. The building, known as the former New York Times building, is an individual landmark and is part of the Pace University campus. The proposal is to install new storefronts, let's see, new storefronts, entrances, and signage at the double-height ground floor. The work consists of removing the modern infill on all three street facades, reinstating a building entrance on Spruce Street, installing new metal and stone storefronts and entrances, and installing illuminated signage. Representatives from FXFAL and Pace University are here to elaborate and to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us today. I'm Jean Gallagher. I'm the Vice President for Strategic Initiatives at Pace. I just want to take a couple of minutes to talk about Pace University here in Lower Manhattan. Pace is a four-year, not-for-profit, private institution, and here in Lower Manhattan, we have 8,000 students and about 800 faculty and staff on campus. Over the past 10 years, Pace has grown from a traditional commuter campus into a residential college. We have built two new dormitories in Lower Manhattan in the past three years, and we now have over 2,600 students who have a, live in a university-owned residence within walking distance of campus. This migration towards a residential campus has what prompted our look at our physical environment, and in retaining FXFAL to develop a New York City master plan for our campus. What we have found is that with so many students living on campus, we now need many more student spaces and student-focused spaces, particularly in our owned buildings of One Pace Plaza and 41 Park Row. Our goal of our New York City master plan is to bring the vibrancy of our campus and the life of the creative life that our students and faculty have to the street level, which is not evident currently in these buildings. In 41 Park Row, that's currently the home of our New York City campus bookstore, and in One Pace Plaza, it's primarily administrative offices on the first floor. And so with this plan, is particularly in this phase, we are focused on transforming the lower levels of 41 Park Row and One Pace Plaza into a vibrant student landscape in which the students can engage with the city, which is the reason they come to Pace to come to school. They come to be a part of New York City, and we want to make sure that when people walk by our campus, they see a vibrant campus life activated by the creative pursuits and scholarship of our students and faculty. Thank you. I would now like to introduce Sylvia Smith from FXFAL and Misha Hunter from Lee Salzman, who will talk about the proposed plan.
It's a pleasure to be here with you. Before I begin, I first want to thank the Landmarks Commission's staff, who worked with us, preliminarily looking at early design, and I have to say that the design got better because of that dialogue. Okay. Oh, if I used the right one, wouldn't it? Leanne already oriented you to our building with three fronts. A key element, however, that I want to point out of the master plan is the fact that William Street has become a spine, and One Pace Plaza is now being activated to respond to that, to connect the, the campus connecting to Pace Plaza, and also to 41 Park Row. And we see the development of the project, of all these components, as strengthening that linkage. The key component of 41 Park Row is the fact that we are now taking what is a very stratified and very enclosed building, turning the first floor, second floor, and basement into interconnected student-oriented spaces. Big focus on commons areas, places for students to meet, and that has very much informed how we've approached the project. Misha?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Misha Hunter, Rickett, Lee Salzman, Architects. Again, we're just really excited to present this project to you, and I'll walk through some of the history. We've done an extraordinary amount of due diligence research, finding many historic photos, as well as George B. Post's original drawings of the New York Historical Society, which have been a tremendous resource in informing our process. The original New York Times building was actually not on this site. This was the second New York Times building, built in 1857, and due to the critical location, the Times said, you know what, to George B. Post, we don't want to move. We want to stay right where we are. We don't want you to interfere with our operations, and we want you to build your building on top of this existing building while we're remaining in operation. So, this is forward. So, the, the New York Times, a former New York Times building, the individual landmark, is one of the last remaining survivors of Newspaper Row, and it has a very prominent presence on Printing House Square. There's a statue of Benjamin Franklin on Printing House Square, which is, you know, very significant as well, and I think speaks to that master plan design. You know, what we have uncovered in our due diligence effort is the complex history of alterations that have occurred to this building, particularly tied to the changing programmatic uses at the building space, from the newspaper offices that used to exist at the building space, then when the Times moved up to Long Acre Square, there was a transformation to retail commercial, and then in 1951, and subsequently, changes again to reflect academic and institutional use. So, again, speaking to some of the drawings that we found, I just wanted to say the, that it was really a technical coup that George achieved, and this was commented on by several, you know, authors writing in different journals at the time. Montgomery Schuyler, writing in the Real Estate Record and Guide in 1889, said, "In scale and in adjustment, the details of the Times building characterized by discreteness, moderation, and propriety, that it is a noble and dignified building." And further, the New York Times, touting their own horn in 1889, speaking of their home, they said, "Particularly at the storefronts, the frames are a light construction of metal above which the massive piers are visible, and behind which they are felt. It is a solution that is both straightforward and successful." So, we're going to be speaking about that, or Sylvia's going to be speaking about that shortly. Some of the photographs that we've found, really, this is on Spruce Street facing out onto Printing House Square, and you can see the statue of Benjamin Franklin. Of course, this masonry portal no longer exists. The other thing that we noted is the changes in plane to the infill, just to go back really fast. You can see how the glazing at the first floor and the second floor were set back. On Spruce Street, there actually used to be open airways down below, and you can see some fencing. Then on to Park Row, you can actually see how the storefronts really projected forward, proud of the masonry piers. There were different treatments on, on different elevations. To 1951, with changes again to reflect the institutional academic use. And then where we are today, the commission had approved in 2000 the Barnes &amp; Noble bookstore alterations that accommodated aluminum-framed storefront infill with granite bulkheads and blue awnings. And these alterations unfortunately have not worn very well over time. On closer inspection, you can see very extensive cracking of the stone, these modern louvers, a lot of snaking exterior conduit on the stone, and, and other patching materials. You can also see how the granite bases that were used as part of the infill, modern infill, you can see the distinction between the historic profiled granite base versus these more modern and streamlined elements. So, those would be proposed to be removed.
Thank you, Misha. We were inspired by this building, the overall structure and framework, since the storefront had been modified in 1905, 1916, 1919, 1928, 1938, 1941, 1950, 1956, sometime in the 80s and in the 2000s, we opted to look at the overall building itself, and came to truly love the heroic structure that both celebrated the vertical here, and also the recognition of the structural organization of the building. And again, as Misha said, Post received a lot of accolades at the time for not succumbing to the truly overblown Richardsonian-Romanesque that existed then. These are images where we are showing you the existing, obviously, and inserting the new. One thing I would like to note for you is, we have referenced the page number in the booklet on the slide, because I know sometimes these images are hard to see. For, for us, the translation of the base needed to both honor the existing building, but also reflect who Pace is now. We wanted that two-story expression to be very strong. We wanted to emphasize the verticality. We wanted to keep the scale appropriate, and do this in a refined way. We truly were focused on doing something contemporary, however, because of the no-existing historic fabric remained. I'm going to do a quick walkthrough here. The north elevation on Spruce Street once had the elevator, had the entry. Now, it is the Barnes &amp; Noble bookstore. It is, feels very enclosed, very separated. Our key approach here is to remove that which was added in the 50s, the granite bulkhead, relocate all of the grills. We've reworked all of the mechanicals so that it is removed from the facades. We have lowered the sills, and then we have reintroduced the horizontal as a combination of both statuary metal and fitted glass, and I'll get to the details here. It's very key to understand that the floors will be very open. The art gallery, the, the college art gallery is located on this level, on the first level. I'm actually going to go forward to touch on that. The art gallery is, is here, and again, we're thinking of some of the great college art galleries in the city, the New School, Gray Gallery, the notion of connecting to the street, activating the street, making what goes on at Pace more apparent. And I'm off my notes here. Much of this elevation was changed in the 50s. The former entry now will be a secondary, whoops. Do I have the pointer? It's not pointing. So, we've, we're stripping away at the southern entry to the building, all of the stone infill, and again, going back to the very powerful frame and rusticated pilasters. I'll, I'll get into more detail here. You can see the face of the pilaster. You can see the face of the pilaster. Well, I really wish I could point. The key idea here is to celebrate those strong pilasters. We're introducing a metal frame around the opening, setting the glass back so that we can read the stonework while maintaining the sense of opening and the strength of the overall opening. On the entry itself, which we're reintroducing to, again, reference back to Ben Franklin but also tie the building to one pace, very restrained, again, we're looking at the terminology that was used for Post building early on, about being discreet and moderate yet bold and vigorous. The entry itself is defined by a granite frame, which is the same granite that we're using under the windows. This is another view from the northwest, where you can see the gallery space. You can see the student space above. We love the depth and strength of this building, the pilasters themselves with their vertical focus, but within the building, you really, you see the structure that accommodated the ability to build the new Times over the old New York Times. We love that depth, so we're lining the windows with that frame to celebrate the depth. Just to give you a little bit of an idea of the inside to out, this is the gallery looking out toward the Franklin statue. These are the student spaces on the interior. We're actually cutting away on the east side of the building to let more light in and also create further space for display. We were asked by the staff to provide a bit more information on the east and west facades. On the left-hand side, you have the Nassau Street facade, where we have consolidated all of the grills and louvers. Again, we're using the same statuary bronze metal. On the Park Row side, you see the new, really the re-established entry, which goes back to the elevator cores. Yes, yes.
In looking at your section, it looks like the plane of the glass comes to the front of the masonry that is not part of the pier. Here in this photo, it looks like the bronze is set back a little bit from that
Face of the pier.
Secondary masonry, not from the face of the pier. The pier is clearly not in any way imprinted on. But here in this photo, unless I'm looking at it wrong, it looks like the stone, there's the outer plane, and it sets in, and then there's a return on that inner plane.
Yes.
Is that not the case on some facades and is on others? Because here, I see the pier, that's the return of the pier, and then it looks like it's flush with the stone.
No, the intent is it's setting back. This is a more current.
So, the rendering is accurate.
That is accurate.
Great, okay.
We were focused on the pilaster face, but you're absolutely right. The rustication sets back. There's a secondary plane, and we've set back from that. We want that to read. And the overall view, and I think that covers what we were going to review. That covers it. I went way off my notes, but I think you got the idea.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Adi?
Just a quick question. On page 21, or it's in other places as well.
Which image is that?
21. Yeah, it could be that. Yeah, fine. I'm just wondering, what was your reasoning, thinking around keeping this kind of, this wider pier with the small door in it, rather than, because that wasn't original, original, right? Rather than having it be like the other piers on either side, or sort of thinner, and allowing for your door to be the single main door to the right?
There actually was a door there originally. And one went to the office space and one went to the first-floor space. So, the Spruce Street entry, I believe, went to the New York Times, and then this entry went into the tower. So, there's always been a door there.
Always been a door there. Because at the very oldest drawings, I couldn't find it.
I think if you look at some of the early historic drawings and see it. We didn't want to take away something that had been there in terms of that opening. It also allows the art gallery to have a separate entry, and they can host things independent of the first floor.
So, when we look at this elevation, what we see is, the dark brown is exposed metal.
Yes.
The lighter brown is spandrel?
Yes.
And so, what we're seeing at the bottom of all the second-floor windows is a band of spandrel glass that's then flush with the glass above it with no expressed muntin separating the two.
Correct.
And so, it's like a butt-glazed joint? Or is it one piece of glass?
It's actually, no, it's one piece of glass.
Okay, and then the vertical, the vertical shadow line or light brown line is a mullion? That's a butt-glazed mullion, or what is that?
Behind, yes.
So, that's a silicone joint?
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
Questions for now? Okay. Will you take testimony, Kristabel Goff?
Kristabel Goff for the Society for the Architecture of the City. It is hard for us to understand why the proposed program requires such an extreme elimination of divisions in the ground-floor windows and the openings above. The character of the building would be altered and diminished by the excessive transparency, completely at odds with the Richardsonian-Romanesque style that George Post adopted and Meinecke retained in his expansion. The undistinguished history of later storefronts does nothing to support the present proposal, which we think should be rethought. Thank you.
Barbara Seay of the Historic District Council. Forty-one Park Row, the former New York Times building, is a very prominent building on a very prominent block and should be respected as such. HDC finds that the proposed oversized glass windows at the base would be incongruous with the building's historic character and detract from its overall appearance. Changes made to this individual landmark in the 1950s, before the building was designated, are more appropriate than the stark changes being proposed in this post-designation application, which would erase the base's historic window configuration completely. Considering that this is not a prime retail location and does not appear to be proposed for such a use, we see very little justification for this alteration. The cracks in the granite base also do not justify the introduction of so much glass. If the cracks represent an issue that needs to be remedied, HDC would suggest restoring the granite instead. In any event, an appropriate intervention should take cues from the structure's very well-documented past. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers?
Community Board One recommends that the commission accept this application provisionally, but require the applicant to redesign the first and second-floor windows more contextually, especially on Park Row elevation.
So, that is it. All right. Do we have any other questions for Pace and the team? Okay, we can, yes, Adi?
So, just in terms of use, at one time, so you're opening up the entire space, or is there still, I should have looked at it more carefully, but
Can we go back to the section?
So, it's still a two-story space, interior of those
We actually, behind you in the section, we're opening up between the first floor and the second floor with a stair, so that that will be open at that point.
And where does that moment live on the elevation?
The facade. There's a stair behind, I can't, there's a stair behind here that sits back from the facade. It opens up that corner.
And that you want to see? You want to see the full volume height of that stair, is that right?
Yes.
And, but it's only in that moment where you are in a double-height space?
Where you're connecting the lower levels, the middle level, and the first floor and the second floor, correct?
All right, any other questions?
Just, the applicant's going to clarify one point on that earlier question about the plane of the new storefront infill in relation to the pier and then the sort of second plane of stone, just because it's a little confusing, and I think it's worth going over the section on 22, and then another plan that's in your packet but it's not on the slides. They'll just kind of clarify one little detail about that.
Yes, that section. So, right, you should go to the booklet, which is not, sheet 28, which is not in this frame. The frame is somewhat confusing here. It looks like we have a projection that is going in front of the stone. We are not, we are setting back from the two layers of stuff.
And so, just to further clarify, in your handout, sheet 22, there's a nice comparison of the original infill configuration, the existing, and then the proposed. And there you will see the plane of the storefront infill as it does move forward slightly from one version to the next. But the point is, the next sheet, 28, that shows that in plan, shows that there's a reveal. So, when you cut through this storefront in section, it's catching all of its depth, but there's actually a gap to each side of this sort of picture frame within that opening. So, there's more depth than it may seem in the section drawing that you're seeing there, but the point is, it's moving a little bit forward than the current infill is today, and then more forward than what it was historically.
Right, but more importantly, I mean, that's important, but let me just keep asking on that. The top elements of window glass are set back from the bottom. So, it won't read as, the glass is not continuous, is it? Because in the, what you're calling typical proposed configuration, on page 22, on the right, is that telling us that the glazing is back on the top elements, or not?
No.
No, that's in the upper floors.
Yes.
I see.
They're in the orange. And that was very intentional to make that. He was inserting that opening and really make the flat-arched one.
All right, any other questions? Okay, in that case, we'll close the hearing. Jeannie? All right, Michael?
I'm troubled by the first-floor and second-floor window treatment. This is an individual landmark, and I think the departure from the original character and subsequent character treatments of these windows is far too drastic and really destroys any reference to the historic configuration of these windows, and I'd like to see it changed.
All right, other comments? Yeah?
I think I agree with Michael. I think that it's, there's a lot of beautiful detailing about this proposal. I think that the spandrel is very nicely done. I think that the way the glass is generally detailed and handled is very nice. I think the general removal of the relatively recent infill is appropriate. But I think that the irony here is that you've got, if you were to show me these images without showing me the use, I would say this is definitely a two-story retail use, right? Because of the big, it's usually the retail customer who wants the uninterrupted window to better show the wares. Here, there's no programmatic reason why one needs to have the uninterrupted, you know, swathes of glass that could argue for a first-floor storefront, certainly not for a second-floor storefront. But I think that in all the iterations of this building up until the present, the tripartite arrangement has filtered down to the second floor at the very least, and originally, it came to the first floor. I think that if you were to look at the program of the original building and the program of the current building, it could be suggested that a better connection to the tripartite division even on the first floor would echo the kind of role that both a newspaper and a college plays in the world relative to Barnes and Nobles or some, you know, or store. I think that you could have the elegance of detailing without losing that sense of connection to the building above, at least on the second floor and possibly on the first as well. I also think that the plane of the glass, while the applicant really wants to sell us on the arch, the depth of the arch, by putting the glass at the plane of the stone, further out than it has been as far as we can tell from their documents in history, I don't see how you're doing that. I think that the plane of the glass can be unified from the second floor to the first, as they wish, but I think it should be back at the level of the old, existing second-floor glass so that the returns on the masonry can be experienced, not just in a tucked-in reveal that's two inches wide, but actually as something that you can see and experience. And I think if they wanted to explore depth and projection within their glass in such a way that allowed for that masonry to read, that would be okay, and that would be well within the precedents that they've shown us. But I think that this one, where it's basically a little reveal, doesn't do it.
You know, I agree with some of what you're saying, but I would say one thing about the two-height space, you know, the first and the second floor, and that one thinks it's retail. I think there is, there is something programmatic about trying to make this visual connection between Pace on this side of the street and the plaza, the main building, its connection to William Street. So, I think there is, there is other things that are in play that draw you visually. Even the activity of students on that floor tell you something about the nature and the connections between a campus that is separated out by streets. So, I think that's, I think that's valid. I think that even if you choose to do that, it doesn't necessarily mean one has to take the somewhat blunt approach that has been taken, which is to have just plain glass and that's it. You can actually find a way to recall the separations in the fenestration, which was there. So, you have very strong vertical features, but you have some delicacy within that. They don't necessarily have to be as heavy as what you have above, but you could incorporate which would allow still a lot more transparency, but has these divisions, which I think just creates a lot more texture to the base. I think the idea of lowering, I guess, the granite at the lower level to activate the space is a very good approach, because I think that's always been a little bit problematic about the building. And I think, so I think they should explore sort of introducing some vertical elements. I think it'll give it more texture and richness, and also recall historically that it could still be in a that it could still be in a more contemporary vocabulary. And I think the depth of the window, I would agree with you, but I think that there's, you know, it's interesting, the depth, they have a lot of actually different levels to play with. It's, they're sort of multiple recesses and it seems that they could just continue to explore that as well. But I think as proposed, it really misses out on the opportunity of providing more recess and depth to the facade.
Right. I, I sort of thought that at first, what both you and, and Michael are saying, but I've kind of, I've kind of, I've continued to look at that section on 29 and, and kind of come around to, to, to what I think is the, is the design intent. Well firstly, I, I'd say to, to Michael, Goldblum's point about, you know, what's the use, I, and I hope I don't sound cynical when I say that unfortunately I think university and retail these days is not that far away. So, I, I mean, and so, and that, and this speaks, I mean, I, as a college parent, right. But, but back to the section issue, there is something interesting that I think that they're doing in reversing entirely our sense of what it means to create depth. What they're doing, again, if, I don't know if, if it's okay to go to page 29, but is that they're saying the gla, and, and I, and my sense is that they might have even said that in a, in a more sort of obvious or forceful way, that the, that they're kind of, they're almost like inflating from the inside out the glass so that it has, it's not, this is not just about transparency, it's about the kind of, the volume of the absent, of, of what's glazed. It's almost as though it was being filled from the inside out, so it has a kind of a thickness. And I think that that's actually, and, and you know, the kind of can, the, the little reveal or can at that, at the horizontal piece accentuates that. So my question is, can they do that even more, one? And two, is there any value in doing that and somehow, I'm not sure about this, but seeing the, the masonry return through it on the sides? So right now you've got just the steel wrapping.
Yes.
I don't, I, I, I'm not sure. Maybe you want to continue to do that, but maybe there's something about actually reading the masonry continuing behind it so that you see that through this kind of pumped-up or, or filled-out glazing, which I think is a really interesting interpretation of depth here. So I'm turned around to it.
All right, other comments?
Yeah.
Yes, Jeannie.
I think that's a very interesting perspective, Addie. I just want to step back, I mean, I actually am more, my thinking's more aligned with yours and Michael's, but I just want to step back here to page 24 for a minute. You know, I think we've all mentioned the fact that, and, and in the beginning of your presentation, you talked about the Pace campus. And I think what you're trying to do downtown is really unite your buildings and spaces as well as you can, given the fact that this, the campus has evolved in, you know, in a retrofitted kind of way. This building happens to be in a very prominent location, so it affords you a lot of opportunities to make a statement and it also enables you to really, conceptually and also physically create that connectivity. But when I, I feel like maybe this move that you've made and on the base of this building is a, a little bit overly ambitious in order to do that, that you could accomplish your goal without actually making such a big step and a step in a way that I feel, especially if you step back and look at the building, it kind of compromises the integrity of the building a little bit. And I do agree that it, there is a disconnect between this now two-floor base and the rest of the building. So I think that I fall in the camp that says, I, I love conceptually what's happening at the ground, at that first level. And I don't think if you do something that relates, that's, has some more verticality in the second, that relates, that ties both of the, both the first floor and the second to the rest of the building together, I don't think you're going to be compromising your goal because you're still, you know, opening this building up in a way that it has not been opened up, but, but maintaining its, as I said, maintaining its integrity. I, I do also think that there probably is something you could do, you know, on the sides of the windows to convey a little more depth as, as well. But I, but I appreciate what you're trying to accomplish.
Okay, are, are there any other comments? All right, well, I, I think, you know, we're not going to take any action here. I think there, the commissioners have some suggestions, but I think we are open to seeing resolution of these and so we'll table it for now and look forward to seeing the next iteration. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, the last item on the agenda for today is item 17. It's an application for a certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Manhattan, docket number 196068. This is 601 Lexington Avenue, the City Core Center, the former City Core Center, an individual landmark, a late 20th century modern-style mixed-use complex designed by Hugh A. Stubbs and built in 1973 through 78. The application is to modify the base and entrances at the Market Building.
The proposed work is located at East 53rd Street. This is at the base of the Market Building, adjacent to the tower, shown here in the highlighted area. I do want to point out that alterations to other areas of the complex are currently in progress and some shown here as out of scope were approved prior to designation. And the Commissioners will further note that this proposal has also been reviewed by the City Planning Commission.
And Commissioners, I'm just gonna, just to remind everyone that when we designated the building, we all recognized that the ground floor in particular was very much, was subject to City Planning Commission jurisdiction to provide all sorts of public benefits, transit and, and access and other things, and that the Commission and its designation report recognized that there was going to be this dual review and that we would understand that there were these other mandates, similar maybe to like ADA, that kind of thing, other mandates that this owner is subject to and that we would, were cooperatively recognizing that city planning was very involved. And as you'll hear, these, the applicants have been at city planning for some time, working through lots of issues that city planning was trying to resolve about their mandate about public access and, and things like that.
Good afternoon, Wesley O'Brien of Free Frank, representing Boston Properties, on an application for a certificate of appropriateness to allow for renovations to the East 53rd Street entrances of the low-rise building at 601 Lexington Avenue. Because the proposed renovations are primarily to facilitate improvements to the indoor public atrium, I'm going to briefly describe, as by way of background, the recent approval by the City Planning Commission, and then Bill Higgins will present the design. So as you may recall from the presentations during, during the recent designation of this building, 601 Lexington was built in 1975 pursuant to four public space bonuses. Over two years ago, we began meeting with city planning regarding the proposal to improve the public spaces. The centerpiece of this effort, which is most relevant to our application today, involved design changes meant to reinvigorate an, the interior public atrium. Currently, the covered pedestrian space, the interior atrium, is very inward-facing and there are no direct lines of sight from the street, no clear connectivity that, that pedestrians walking along the street can see. So pursuant to the City Planning Commission application, a new entrance would be created at East 53rd Street, allowing for direct access into the atrium by a grand staircase and as well allowing establishing clear sightlines from the street into the atrium. While the application was pending at the Department of City Planning, the building was calendared for designation. Therefore, as part of its review process, the Department of City Planning consulted with the Landmark Preservation Commission before approving the application in November. Boston Properties is now ready to proceed with the atrium renovations and therefore is seeking a certificate of appropriateness to allow for those renovations. With that, I'll turn it over to Bill.
Bill Higgins of Higgins Quaysbarth, Joe Loro of Gensler, who are the architects, is also here for questions or further detail, but we thought that perhaps in the interest of efficiency, maybe just one of us would make the actual presentation. So here is overall view of the complex as designated last December. The designation report concentrates overwhelmingly on two aspects of, of the, the complex. One is the, is the tower and the other are the public spaces. So these are the aspects of the complex that are really, receive the most attention and this proposal, as already mentioned, is very much about the public spaces and, and really working with and building on and in fact realizing the intention of, of an open, very public place that was in the design. So the yellow area is on 53rd Street and that is the area that is exclusively part of today's proposal. As already mentioned, there is other work that is approved and in many cases underway and this is really intimately connected with that part of the work. Just some, some context, we were just looking at the 53rd Street, the southern side elevation. This is the 54th Street side. So existing plan on the top and proposed plan on the bottom, this really gets to the essence of this proposal. Here is the existing plan, 53rd Street. Here is that non-landmarked but of great concern to city planning and very much part of the sort of public space, public accessibility, identity of the building. The way it is currently entered is through this deeply recessed side entry in the far east side of the area we're, we're talking about. And as you go through, you sort of have to go off to the side in order to get to this public space and, and you also have in front of you the access to this through-block covered passageway that leads to 54th Street. There are no doors in this location, which is directly in front of the, the public area. Then there is the, a door on the side which leads partly to the public area and partly to a retail space. Here is the proposal. The proposal is to create doors here in this area, which provide very direct and perceptible access and openness to this public space and to modify the entries to the, to the west as you will see. This is again, not part of the landmark space, but just to give you a clear idea, this is the space that we and city planning very much want to revitalize and this would be those new stairs and sitting area which are directly connected to the proposed new doors. So here, surrounded by green, is the existing condition. There is that deeply recessed door. Here are no doors and here is a door to this tenant space, which we think can be improved. So comparing existing tenant door, no doors, door into the, into the corridor, and here is the proposed, a, a more understated tenant door, these larger, more open doors that lead to the interior space and then the doors are eliminated from this area so that it becomes part of the, of the window area rather than the, the access area. Comparing the same thing in plan, existing entry door, minor retail door, no doors, and here are the doors we are proposing, the improved door, and then the window system. Comparing this in, in, in rendering, from the west, there's that secondary door, there's the existing display windows, and here is that deeply recessed door. Here is our proposal, simplifying this door to provide access to that same space, adding these three doors and then doing this window wall in the vocabulary, which is sympathetic to the existing. This is very much a, these, these changes are all proposed in the vocabulary of the existing system. Here is the same thing looking from east to west, existing recess, existing display windows, existing door, and here is the, is the proposal. And that is the application.
Yes, are there any questions? Yes, Dana?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about access for people with disabilities to the space. I assume you have an option for that as well.
Yes, it is, it is accessible. If you'd like more detail, we, we, the architects can certainly talk about it. I will say that, as you'll hear, the community board was very much in favor of this and, and the board is particularly, this board is particularly concerned about barrier-free access and we had a lot of discussion of that and they were quite satisfied.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? All right, Christopher Gough?
Christopher Gough, for the Society for the Architecture of the City. It appears, looking at part of the plan said to be outside the scope of this application, and we have no problem with the three revolving doors, let me say right now, it seems that this so-called angled icon is going to get a little less angled when the great subdivided angled square leading to the sunken plaza is destroyed and replaced by a smaller straight run and the award-winning Sasaki Associates water feature beside it is trashed. As we understand it, this public plaza was supposed to be an amenity which was exchanged for zoning bonus. The City Planning Commission has an embarrassing history of negligent administration of plaza bonuses, as was reported in the New York Times in an article I will circulate presently. It should be noted that one of the entries to St. Peter's Church is through this much-used plaza, which also leads to the subway system, and that St. Peter's Church, like the steps and the disappearing water feature, was originally designed to reflect and bring down to the base the surprising angle that terminates the tower. The whole stepped and angled street-level concept will be totally destroyed if in the future this change to the plaza is made. You see it in the existing and proposed plans that were on the screen. You, you should look at that again, the out, the, the entrance to the subway down steps. It is possible, according to the designation report, that the LPC missed the boat in this designation and that ownership obtained a Buildings Department permit to destroy the sunken plaza before the designation was calendared. the sunken plaza before the designation was calendared. Presently, we have been unable to verify this. As the area is a privately owned public space, it is unclear that City Planning Commission's reported decision has precedence over yours. In any case, may I say to management, it would be a fine gesture to abandon this modification whose purpose is obscure. The landmark will be immensely diminished otherwise. And I'm going to circulate David Dunlap's article about those spaces and how they've been administered.
The next speaker is Barbara Z.
Barbara Z. of the Historic Districts Council. The public has been informed that proposed changes to the sunken courtyard of the City Corp Center were approved by the City Planning Commission prior to designation, and that permits have been filed with the Department of Buildings. HDC wishes to express its regret at reports that the water feature may be removed from the space, which seems like an unfortunate loss. We would suggest that the LPC retain a seat at the table in discussions for the fate of the courtyard by working closely with the owner and perhaps the MTA to find an alternative or to return this decorative feature, which provides an element of civility and whimsy to the space. Thank you.
The next speaker is Theodore Grunwald.
Good afternoon, Chair Commissioners, or as the late, great architect Hugh Hardy would once say, hello sunshine. Today's application before the Commission from Gensler and Boston Properties is more revealing for what is not shown rather than what is shown. Therefore, I am reserving comment on the details of the submission in order to instead address the so-called statement of regulatory intent governing it. The New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission's emerging trend of inserting regulatory language into the form of statements of regulatory intent in its official landmark designations is a form of bait and switch. Because this regulatory language is making it into law and is governing LPC decisions without any proper public oversight. In this instance, the intent to exclude LPC regulation of the Sasaki steps and water feature from the designation was not brought to the attention of the public before the designation hearing of September 13, 2016. As a result of this new practice, the public is given no way to oversee, sign off on, or object to these so-called statements of regulatory intent, which, in this case, have a disastrously deleterious effect upon this designated landmark. To the public, who had assumed Hidako Sasaki's plaza and beautiful waterfall were protected features, the LPC's regulatory intent for City Corp directly contradicts the spirit and intent of the LPC's landmark designation, and the LPC's regulatory exclusion of these elements amounts to a de facto de-designation of the plaza. At a time when distinguished works of mid-century and late-modern landscape architecture are literally being uprooted all across the country, the destruction of City Corp's water feature and the leveling of its stair and plaza are unacceptable. Designed by pioneering Asian-American and landscape architect Hidako Sasaki, the water feature and plaza at the former City Corp Center is an incredibly important and rare surviving example of his vanishing work. This water feature ennobles the everyday experience of the worker and is something that this de Blasio administration should readily and easily understand and embrace, particularly since Boston Properties can well afford to maintain this beloved public amenity. And I have some additional material in my statement, which the clock precludes me from continuing, but there are two questions -- three questions here which I would like the Commission to answer this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? Okay, I'm just looking ahead. Community Board Five Resolution, please, give me a second. So, all right, so Community Board Five recommends approval of this project. Does the team want to respond to any of the questions? Okay, yes. Mark, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to respond quickly to some of the comments about the regulatory intent. I think that Commissioners, you have noticed statement of regulatory intents in designation reports. These are things that the Commission has intermittently done since the very beginning of the Commission, sometimes explicitly in separate paragraphs, other times sprinkled more sort of indirectly throughout designation reports. So they're nothing new. We're doing them now primarily just to sort of make clear sort of many obvious things and approaches we're taking. I mean, the designation, the statement of regulatory intent here does not, contrary to some of the testimony you've heard, de-designate or take out of the jurisdiction any elements before you or at this building. What it does is it recognizes that this building is subject to very specific and stringent requirements outside of our law to, in relation to providing certain public benefits, and that these -- the owners of this building must comply with dealing with this mandate. And that mandate is something that exists just like other mandates in law, and that the statement of regulatory intent just acknowledges that and sort of commits the Commission to working cooperatively with the owner and with City Planning in reaching these conclusions. So I think that there's nothing -- there's no de-designation, there's nothing here that changes the scope of our authority.
Right, and I just wanted, again...
So is the plaza within the scope of the designation?
Yes, yes, and the other thing I should note is that the testimony confused two separate things. There's the statement of regulatory intent, and there's the fact that people who get these -- this owner got permits prior to designation that authorizes them to do work. That doesn't, again, take these future changes in this plaza will be subject to the Commission's jurisdiction, just like any other change at that time.
Can we ever stop an owner who's already gotten a permit before we designate? Can we ever stop them from doing what they got the permit for?
No, the law specifically exempts compliance with the landmarks law for work approved by a permit prior to designation.
So, and if the owner and/or City Planning want to remove or replace, remove, displace the fountain, it will come before us?
They've already got that permit.
That permit's already -- they already have permits, and perhaps if they want to talk about it, they have permits to renovate the plaza area prior to designation.
But I think it's worthwhile also to just, you know, this is sort of an unusual creature, and I think when we were looking at this, we recognized this as well, which is, there are not that many landmark buildings that include what's considered POPs, which is privately-owned public spaces, because that -- privately-owned public spaces was a provision that was in the 1961 zoning resolution, and over the years, they -- those regulations kept getting modified. You know, City Planning and -- so we haven't designated that many buildings that are post-61 and post-74, and where these regulations came into place. But the city has been trying to address a lot of issues regarding these public spaces, and they've had subsequent amendments to them. There was a big amendment done for all the public spaces and trying to consolidate them, I think in the late 90s, and again in 2000s under Amanda Burden. City Planning has worked very collaboratively with MAS on an entire sort of initiative to look at all these spaces and try and find ways to improve them. So there is a city policy that's been in place that, you know, precedes our involvement in many of these buildings with the objective to find and incentivize the improvement of many spaces and bring them to provide the full set of amenities, and one case, and then the other is just enforcement, because a lot of these spaces were -- had changed over time. So just, you know, in terms of City Corp building, former City Corp building, this had a long history of changes. I myself worked on a package of changes in the 90s, and I think there was one in the late 90s as well, that had affected the ground floor of this building. It affected the design of the covered pedestrian space, the interior space, which is one of the major spaces, because the original design had failed, so it completely changed it. It addressed aspects of the plaza as well. And so I think when we were looking at this in terms of a designation, I think the regulatory intent is to recognize that this jurisdiction and this goal of making these spaces serve their public purpose will continue to happen and evolve. And so when we think about these spaces, we don't have to think about them only as historic artifacts, but these are spaces that, you know, historically have evolved and will continue to evolve.
But just to be clear...
And it's more of a general sort of notion to the Commission about how to think about these spaces, because the history of this building recognizes that these spaces have changed and may continue to change.
And just to be clear, that would be more true about any changes that they want to make to these spaces from now forward. Here, we have a situation where the change that they made, that the testimony is citing, was already permitted before we came here. So if it had been a different sequence, and it's not, right, if they had -- if we had designated and then they wanted to change that fountain, its angles, get rid of it, whatever it was, we would have input into that. We would coordinate with other regulatory bodies, but we would be expressing an opinion about that. We're not expressing an opinion here because we can't.
Right, I think before us is just the change that they've shown us, which is the facade changes and entrances on West 53rd Street. That's the application before us. Are there questions? Okay, just want to -- any questions, other questions for the applicant, because otherwise we can close the hearing? Do you have any questions? Yes, Kim?
Okay, so firstly, I think it's a positive thing to bring to 53rd Street the kind of sightlines, a way to see the market below, and it really is the kind of the changes in the way that we understand this kind of -- I mean, it's very different from the way that we used to shop in the late 70s and in the early 80s. So I think that that makes a lot of sense. I'm not entirely sure that in order to do that, you need to bring the doors to the street. I mean, what you need to do is to get rid of the fitness and to have, you know, the stairs, that kind of the big amphitheater-like stair or the way into the market through that glazing, but I don't know that it's necessarily -- that the move really requires getting rid of the deep cut and the angled wall that is included there. You know what I mean? It's about a sightline, it's about being able to access to understand that there is that market below and have a sense of it from the street, but I'm not sure that that requires the doors on the street.
Okay, all right, so do we have any more questions for the applicant?
Oh, I see, that's a comment.
That's okay, we can start moving into comments. Kim, do you have a question?
I was just following up on Diane's question about the handicap access. They said there is handicap access, not from these doors, but so on.
Right, do you want to respond to the handicap access?
So essentially, the -- oh, sorry, Joe Loro. Joe Loro with Gensler. So, I mean, the big move that you were just referring to is bringing the grade, you know, making alignment with grade to the entry right now, which doesn't happen at all for any of the public spaces. So, I'm trying to... So when you walk into the existing condition now, it's a split level, essentially you go down about eight feet or up eight feet, and what we're resolving here is this ability to get in at grade and making an alignment for all the public spaces that make it ADA compliant. What we are -- where there are, what's not shown here, there are locations where we handle it with elevating, but what we've tried to do is to make the space in its entirety, and we do so for all the public spaces, allow you to have ADA accessibility, which right now is not the case.
But are you asking where the...
So right here, so these doors here are ADA, are accessible.
They're at grade.
So you have a lift here, if you want to go up, which is not the public space itself.
If you want to go down to the public space?
So, looking at the...
It might disappoint your...
Yeah.
Oh, that's a corner, sorry. I haven't been working on that. Oh, there it is. There it goes.
So this level here is at first floor, there's an elevator here, there's an elevator also in this location, which is hard to pick up on this scale, that allows for you to get to any of the levels that are available to the public, which allows -- and which allows you to get from the concourse level also to, which now aligns the public space now. Currently, there's, rather than putting a ramp there or a lift, what we did is we created a grade at the concourse level which physically connects this and the outdoor space at 1 to 20, or where it's not officially a ramp, and these two spaces are now connected, so you can get to the outdoor, to the indoor, and then there's elevating where there's multi-levels to make a physical connection to all the public spaces.
But would you come through the new doors?
No.
You can't get -- you have to go around the block to do that.
No, there's...
Well, there's a lift.
Best if you go on the left.
But there's a lift.
There's a lift here.
There's a lift on the stairs going right there, Danny.
There's a new lift that brings you to a new elevator.
To the elevator. Written by Boston Properties, the applicant. So what Joe was pointing out, we're doing, making several moves to improve ADA access, which is dropping the slab to grade, so the three new revolving doors are at grade. You can come in off the sidewalk, that's a really important move. Everything else is like a split-level ranch today, which is confusing and not ADA accessible. So you come in at grade, you can move to the south side here, we put in a new lift here and a new set of stairs. We had to readjust this because we're dropping this to grade, new set of stairs to get to a three-block arcade, which is also a bonus area, to bring you to a new elevator up here. The geometry of this, which is very, very complicated, only allowed us to drop an elevator in that location. So we had a lift to an elevator. Once you're on that elevator, that elevator can bring you to 54th. So it goes first to 54th, down to the plaza level, which is also a bonus area. So it's a three-stop elevator, okay? The geometry is very confusing. It's a three-stop elevator, but serves all those public spaces. And then when you're down on the lower side, we've created a ramp structure.
It takes you to the concourse.
We made a set of stairs and created a ramp structure in what we call Main Street to connect our indoor public space with our outdoor public space. So we've made that accessible as well.
But that's not part of this application, it's still somewhere else.
That's already permitted. That's already permitted. But you asked.
Right there, on the right side of that big stair.
That's good. Okay, are there any other questions? All right, then we can close the hearing. All right, comments?
Well, I think that, in general, I think that the changes that they've made are very much in spirit with the building. A lot of the inside entrances, sorry, the outside connects to the inside public spaces. They've reorganized the public space, which while strictly before us, is not before us, but it's been approved, and it manifests in... it's been approved, and it manifests in the facade along 53rd Street. But again, I think that, you know, if you go to the designation report, it wasn't about each and every, you know, the architecture wasn't about every exact pane and dimension. It was recognizing that this building and this complex was unique and significant for a series of reasons, including the fact that it took advantage of these public amenities and the bonuses, the public space bonuses at that time in the 70s. So, I think that the idea of, you know, providing these entrances, the way that it's approached and its design is very much in the vocabulary of the building right now. Even having the recess, because you talked about whether you need that, I think the recess is a part of the vocabulary as well, which is, it marks entrances, and I think they've continued to use that as a device to attract people to enter into this public space. So, I think it's completely appropriate, yes.
I agree. I think that generally speaking, the design that's shown, given its limited scope, is appropriate. The one thing that I, and I think it's a shame that the plaza and the fountain were not part of the landmark, and I understand why, and it's, you know, happens all the time, but it is unfortunate because I think it is a key element of how the public experiences this complex, and that's kind of one of those, you know, fine print details that people don't get when they walk by and say, geez, I thought they just landmarked that thing. So, I think that's unfortunate, but it is what it is. I think it might be worthwhile for the applicant to note that, you know, the public or to the extent that they have commented on it, it is an issue that having some, retaining some spirit of what was there would probably be a good PR move. I think the one thing that I just wanted to say about the design as offered was related to the removal of the angled recessed entry and the use of the angle as an element in their vocabulary. It's kind of anathema to us nowadays that kind of, you know, take out your 45-degree triangle and go to work and, but that's very much part of this design, and I think that the use of the angle, if you look at the existing plan, that kind of galleria that cuts through between 53rd and 54th is marked on both sides by a significant recess, a single angle on one side and a 9 degree on the other. That marking of entrance with the angle and the depth has been lost, and if I were to click my heels together three times, I would wish that there were a way for the applicant to find a way to utilize that design vocabulary in their otherwise very wonderful improvement to this building.
Okay, any other comments? All right, so why don't we move to decision? Is it Michael, you? I've forgotten, where did I end? Oh, he needs you, okay.
Does that mean they can't, they'll move that recess and make it can't, or the angle?
Well, I think, why don't we ask them to sort of explore that with staff? So, we're talking about where they've moved their recess.
Like, it's gone. See, the angle...
Right, they've taken it, yeah, it seems like it's outside.
Look, they're making a huge new entry. It's possible that you could angle the sides of the returns or one of the sides of the returns, it's possible that you could push the plane...
Right, so we're talking about in the new recess.
Right, you could push the pane of the glass back a little bit so that it was at the back of the revolving door instead of at the center of the revolving door, thus giving more space for the expression of that. I think they could work with staff on that.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, in the matter of docket 19-6068, 601 Lexington Avenue, the City Corp. Center, individual landmark, the application is to modify the base and entrances at the Market Building. I note that the public spaces at 601 Lexington Avenue and later alterations to them were designed with the approval of the City Planning Commission as a condition to zoning floor area bonuses. I further note that the City Planning Commission has approved the current proposal for modifications to the Market Building. I finally note that the Department of Buildings permits for alterations to the facade at the Market Building excluding portions of the ground floor were issued prior to designation. I recommend approval finding that the innovative use of zoning incentives that provided floor area bonuses is an integral part of the history of the complex, and that the proposed modifications are consistent with this history, that the current proposed area has undergone a process at City Planning to ensure that the goals of their regulatory mandate have been met, that the proposed work in conjunction with the previous approvals will occur at a complimentary building in the overall complex and will not diminish the architectural character of the tower and super columns which dominate the site, that the work will maintain textural qualities and patterns in the curtain wall consistent with the intent of the original design, that the proposed curtain wall infill at the east end of the facade will reference the presence of the original double-height entrance and utilize material consistent with the original design and forthcoming alterations, that the new street-level void identifying the entrance to the Market Building, although at a different location and a different configuration, will be consistent with the historic use of recesses and exposed columns at points of entry to the public spaces, that the modifications to the existing storefront at the west end of the facade will maintain the plane of the current mall, and that the placement of the scale of the canopy will not call undue attention to itself nor detract from any significant architectural features of the building, and that the work will not diminish the specific architectural and character of this individual landmark. I recommend that the applicant explore with staff the possible retention of the hinged... Not retention, it's...
No, not retention, to work with the staff.
To incorporate...
Greater recess.
An angled...
Angled recess.
Feature within the new recess that recalls the angled facade of the building.
I made a mistake.
Okay. Okay, all right.
What she said.
Yes, okay, second, all in favor? Any opposed?
I was gonna say, I read what was there.
But, I have to look at the sugar content, though, of the 75 and the 70.